First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody. I'm going to go over a few of the ground rules today. I'm not sure everybody's here to come to every council meeting, but this'll be great. This is, we've got a lot of attendees. This'll be awesome if we get this much interest in government all the time. But we only can hope up here, I guess, to have this kind of interest. But what we're going to do here is we have a public hearing first, but just to explain what we're going to do today, there's a lot of items on the agenda today, and there's a lot of controversial items, I guess, on the agenda today. There's just not just one, there's a few. So what I want to do is let everybody know that if you're here for the, I guess, the nondiscrimination legislation, which is ordinance number 111 and 112, what I ask is that when we get there, I'll let everybody speak at that time. I don't think everybody should speak way ahead of time. It seems to make sense to speak just before we discuss those ordinances, because usually you're introduced to speak at introduction of visitors, which is kind of early on. And when I talk about introduction of visitors, those are the other ordinances that we want to talk about today. If you want to speak at that time, besides the nondiscrimination, you could come up at that time and speak on your issue or concern of the agenda. And then when we get to the nondiscrimination, then I'll ask the people who are here for that ordinance, give you an opportunity to voice your concerns or support or whatever you have regarding that ordinance. Is that okay with everybody to understand that? The ground rules on that? So where we're going to start out this evening was with a public hearing. And the public hearing is to consider the rezoning of 1088 South Court Street from R3 High Density Urban Residential to C3 General Commercial. So at this time, I'd ask anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning, and I'll have Mr. Mendel give an explanation of what's going on with the rezoning to start off with. So, Mr. Mendel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, the sun? Yep, okay. As you said, this is a rezoning request for 1088 South Court Street from R3 to high, R3 High Density Residential to C3's General Commercial. This rezoning request went to the Planning Commission at their May 9, 2019, meeting. After reviewing the applicant's request, staff's analysis, the Planning Commission recommended the requested rezoning to City Council. In your packet is all the May 9, 2019 staff report and packet to Planning Commission, the Planning Commission recommended, recommendation resolution, and the draft meeting minutes from the Planning Commission. Since the rezoning requires a public hearing, it went through several steps. On May 28, there was the Finance Committee, it was reviewed by the Finance Committee of City Council. There was the minimum 30-day public notice requirement. And then tonight, July 28, July 8 is the public hearing before City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning at this time? Yes, sir. State your name and address so it can be entered into the minutes.
Thank you. Justin Eddy from Tucker Ellis LLP, 950 Main Avenue, Cleveland, Ohio, 44113. I am land use counsel to the property owner and the applicant in this case, Trillium Creek I'll echo the statements of the Mr. President. This is really neat to see. I told Councilman Shields when I came in, "You guys are either doing something really good or really bad." As Mr. Mendel mentioned, we're here tonight on our request to rezone the property located at 1088 South Court Street from the R3 zoning designation to the C3 general commercial designation. The proposed project that we're planning in connection with this is the construction of a KeyBank ATM kiosk. Not a bank. It would basically be a drive-up ATM with a roundabout essentially installed on the property. We've been through, initially, we went through the process of seeking a zoning variance through the BZA process. That variance was denied. In connection with that, we filed for site plan approval as well. That plan approval was, and Mr. Mendel can correct me if I'm wrong, contingent upon us either obtaining a variance or the appropriate zoning for the project to move forward, as well as reconfiguring of the driveways. So we've got the latter of those two. We've reconfigured that driveway in connection with the Planning Commission's request, and now we here are on to step one in that process. To begin, I just want to make sure that everybody has a clear picture of the surrounding area from near 1088 South Court Street. To the north, you have Handel's Ice Cream Shop. That's a commercial use within an R3, I believe it's R3, R3 or R2 zoning district that was constructed pursuant to the approval of a PUD that conflicted with that zoning designation at that point in time. To the north of that, there is also a veterinary office that existed when that property was annexed into this city from Montville Township. And on this property, there is an existing commercial use that existed when this property was annexed into, from Montville Township. To the west, I think as you all know, the properties on that side of Court Street are all zoned C3 general commercial. This zoning does, this zoning district extends to the south, almost to the border of the, with Montville Township, with the exception of another R3 zone district right along that southern border. To the south of this property, which lies all within Montville Township, it's my understanding that this property is zoned commercial. Specifically, there is a, the property that is immediately to the south is under contract to be developed as a nursing home, pending approval of that licensure via the state of Ohio. There is additional planned commercial development in Montville Township in addition to what you already have down there with things like the discount drug mart, the McDonald's, and I believe there's a tire store or something along those lines. I think it's worth mentioning that as this area has developed over the years, the existing residential uses that existed on this property, as well as those properties to the south and immediately to the south in Montville Township, those used to contain residences, single-family residences, which have all since been abandoned and torn down for commercial, primarily commercial use or use in connection with commercial activity occurring on those properties. Given these circumstances, we feel that a change to the C3 zoning classification is appropriately for this location minimally to basically bring it in conformance with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. One thing I want to mention to council is sort of the interplay between what I characterize as the property owner's fundamental rights and the city's obligation to advance a legitimate government interest with respect to its zoning classifications and its legislation. Really, what the idea is, is to avoid discriminatory zoning regulations that impose regulations that are inconsistent with similarly situated properties or which are inconsistent with a surrounding area. With this in mind, we think that the current R3 zoning classification is inappropriate, and the fact that this property sits in what has been developed either pursuant to existing zoning with respect to the properties on the west side, or per the city's approval of a project that conflicts with the existing zoning or inconsistent with that zoning classification as a commercial, as a commercial thoroughfare supports a C3 designation. I would note that the code itself seems to support a C3 zoning designation in this location. I'll quote Code Section 1137.01, which states that "The C3 general commercial district is established to provide for uses in addition to those specified for the local and commercial retail office district, and thereby provide service and sales in support of the primary business activities in the community." On that section, that is essentially what this proposed project is designed to do. 1137.01 goes on to states that their location is advantageous at specified points on major thoroughfares at outlying locations in the community. If you look at this specific location, this, in my opinion, fits that description and is consistent with the C3 commercial zoning classification that exists on the north side of Court Street, on the other, on the north end of the city. In fact, this is an ideal location for this type of zoning classification, considering the surrounding uses both within the city and within Montville Township, much like that zoning district on the north side of the city. I will, I would like to address the comprehensive plan. I think as you all know that the comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2007, calls for a zoning classification similar to what is the current R4. What I would point out is that even the comprehensive plan acknowledges that a zoning change is appropriate in this case, and that determination was made in 2007. I think the only question that remains is to what? In reaching that conclusion, I think it's important to look at what factors exist presently relative to a specific, a specific property? Again, the comprehensive plan is about 12 years old, and it is not law. It's a guide, and it may have been what was determined to be appropriate at that time, but things change with respect to a specific property, and what those current circumstances are should trump when determining what a zoning classification should be appropriate. Here, it's my opinion that adherence to the comprehensive plan is misplaced, given that this area has seen so much commercial development, particularly in those neighboring properties where the development is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Before closing, I want to address just a few things. In our prior meetings with residents at Planning Commission meetings, BZA meetings, et cetera, one of the matters that has been brought up as a concern of some of the residents of the Pinewood Development is traffic. And we don't dispute that there are, there is traffic in the area, but at the end of the day, everything that's been presented so far has been anecdotal. In this case, we're only looking at 60 to 80 trips per day to this property. That means 30 to 40 cars that visit the property per day. So this is a passive use that captures existing traffic in the area. It's not going to create additional traffic in the area. And while the traffic concern may be valid, generally speaking, it's not a concern that relates specifically to this property. And frankly, in that scenario, that is a secondary consideration, where a proposed use is lawful, and given the context of the surrounding area, the question of additional or existing traffic becomes a secondary consideration. That's from State Exrel Colleen Realty Co. v. City of East Cleveland, a 1959 case. The last thing I'll mention, I mentioned the BZA appeal. I had some communication with Councilman Shields about pending litigation against the city. I wanted to clear, just kind of clear the air on that. Trillium Creek has not sued the city. They've simply appealed the decision of the BZA with respect to the zoning variance. In that case, after the appeal was, the notice of appeal was filed, we moved to stay that case pending essentially resolution of our rezoning application, and represented to the court that, assuming that a result, a favorable result is reached with respect to that rezoning, that that appeal would be, would be dismissed. It would have, there wouldn't be any point to it at that, at that time. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that it's never been Trillium Creek's intention to have any sort of litigation against the city. They did that on advice of council, me, to simply preserve their rights as it relates to that process. And again, that, that appeal in all likelihood would be dismissed. With that, we would ask, I'm happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, we would ask that you consider our request.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. I don't think we have any questions at this time. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning? Is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition of the rezoning? State your name and address so it can be entered into the minutes.
Thank you. My name is David Hoek, H-O-E-K. I live at 28 Pinewood Drive. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of the Pinewood Condominium Association, and we're here to represent and to ask council that we, to tell council that we don't want any rezoning on the lot at 1088 South Court Street. The reason being, the reasons being, first of all, traffic. The addition of additional two, additional commercial traffic lane driveway between South Court would be another one of 19, of, let me rephrase that. The addition of two more access lanes on the two tenths of a mile of South Court Street between Stirbridge and Medina City Limits would add to the already dangerous traffic conditions caused by nine commercial and residential drives that is city street intersecting a busy two-lane street that has no turn lanes for any intersections. The applicant has offered to close a gravel drive onto their property when the kiosk is constructed. Since this drive is only used by the owner, this change will have little impact on the traffic situation. A recent study of the traffic on Route 3, for the Route 3 traffic circle, estimated that there are 9,000 vehicles per day traveling on Route 3, which in this city, of course, is South Court. Currently, because of the large number of access points and the short distance of road, it is difficult and disruptive with trying to make a left turn. There have been 13 recorded accidents in that stretch of South Court Street from Stirbridge Drive, south to the Medina City Line in the past 30 months. Additionally, there is a blind spot south of Pinewood Drive that obscures northbound vehicles speeding to beat the light at Stirbridge Drive. This makes it dangerous for residents and visitors to Pinewood. We also suggest that any additional traffic generation commercial enterprise before it is approved, that a traffic study, or at least a speed meter be put in place to monitor that traffic. Our concerns about traffic are very real, the in and out of Pinewood, and we invite you, as council people, to visit Pinewood, to go in and out, and to experience the dangerous hazards, the hazards we face every day as we try to exit and enter our neighborhood. First, the proximity of the property to our residential units, although the bank kiosk would be on the front, 19% of the one-acre lot, and is relatively passive to noise generation, the back edge of it would be 50 feet from our residential units. The kiosk would utilize about 19% of the one-acre lot, and if in the future, and it would be on a lease, and if in the future the owner decides to put a business that uses the complete lot, it would generate noise. It could be open at all hours and become a real neighborhood nuisance. We also remind council that the Medina City Planning Director and his staff recommended not to approve rezoning the property from R3 High Density Urban Residential to C3 General Commercial for the following reasons. The C3 district is not consistent with the 2007 City of Medina Comprehensive Update Future Land Use map. The C3 district full range of permitted and conditionally permitted uses has greater potential for negative impact on the property value of the surrounding residential land areas, including Pinewood. The C3 zoning is approved, the possibility exists that a business detrimental to the safe environment of our neighborhood could be installed there. It has been suggested that the land use plan from 2007 is out of date. I remind council that some 30 years ago, this very body approved the land use for Pinewood, and we anticipated that there would be safety and security for our neighborhood far beyond any use by day of a land use plan. Whether or not it is true that the land use plan is out of date, it is important to follow a rezoning plan rather than ignore the plan and rezone the city one property at a time with no plan at all. It is a concern to us that the city planning committee ruled as they did, disregarding the compelling recommendation of the professional staff they employ to support the tasks of city planning. And finally, the impact of this monolithic kiosk as an entryway to the City of Medina, as opposed to the three or four beautiful mature trees that would have to be taken down, does not help improve the image of the city and its historic value. The trees will be replaced by the KeyBank sign, and the KeyBank kiosk was described initially by a spokesman for the KeyBank people, or for the Trillium people, as a marketing tool that is not expected to generate much traffic, but is designated and designed to establish KeyBank's image in the community. I tell you, we prefer the mature trees to the monolithic sign with a red key on it. In conclusion, the Board of Trustees of Pinewood Condominium, consisting of 64 homeowners, respectfully ask that the City Council respond to our request and the recommendation of the City Planning Director, and deny any change in rezoning of the lot at 1088 South Court Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition of the rezoning?
Good evening. My name is Pat Ryan. My address is 4254 Sharon Copley Road, and I frequent the Pinewood neighborhood. I have relatives there, and I also have friends there. Just as a brief history, real brief, my work history includes 25 years of government service. Most of that, or all of it, has been in the area of planning and zoning. So I come with these comments from, I've worked both in Medina County and Summit County. The original request was for a variance to conditionally permit a bank kiosk on a small portion of the land, which was to be leased to the bank from the owner. This request was denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now we have a rezoning request, and as of today, we have not been informed that the original proposed use has changed from kiosk, again, leasing, leased on the southwest portion of the one acre. The current rezoning request is not for a CS or C1, which both would conditionally permit the kiosk, but for C3, general commercial, the most intense and intrusive commercial zoning in Medina zoning code. The C3 allows for a multitude of uses. Many would be intrusive and upsetting to any residential, residential neighborhood, especially since these homes in the Pinewood area are within approximately 50 feet of that rear property line. As we all know, the public assembly uses, including restaurants and bars, have outdoor seating areas, and many are at the rear of the businesses. These outdoor areas can become loud, smoke generating, a nuisance to adjacent residents, and a burden to the city staff if complaints are called in. The original request for a variance was only for a portion of the one acre, for a bank kiosk, and that was sufficient for them at the time. The variance would have limited the use to the kiosk, and if the kiosk was removed, no other use would be substituted, nor could it be expanded, without another variance request. The current buildings there are storage buildings, yes, it was a previous business, storage buildings for property maintenance equipment for the neighboring Trillium Creek, and the current drive is rarely used. Obviously, something may have changed, because the request is now to rezone the entire parcel to C3. The applicant has asked at a previous meeting if they would consider C1, and they didn't, they declined. It is normal planning practice to gradually step intensity of your zoning from residential to commercial, and then on to industrial. It is not common practice, nor is it wise, to place the most intense, intrusive, commercial district directly adjacent to residential homes. If this rezoning is granted, the traffic generated by a restaurant, office, or bar, which I remind you, would all be possible if this rezoning is granted, would be stifling and dangerous, especially during peak hours. In an area not longer than 331 linear feet, there are five commercial driveways from numerous high-volume uses, some of them multiple, as well as two streets, Hartford and Pinewood, converging onto South Court Street. This is a serious issue and needs to be studied before any decision is made on a C3's rezoning. Once a rezoning is done, any one of the permitted or conditionally permitted uses can be located on this site now or in the future. In addition, a less intense zoning classification will not restrict the use for his kiosk, their kiosk. Consider how this intense C3 zoning, the traffic and noise would impact, impact the approximate 120 residents in Pinewood, some who have lived there for over 25 years, some since it was built. These homes are not rentals. They are owner-occupied only, and what is allowed on the property out in front could impact their home values. Although the applicant is proposing a kiosk now, you must consider the future and what uses would be possible with the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another person?
Julie Larrabee, 36 Pinewood Drive in Medina. Traffic safety and congestion is a real problem along this area of South Court Street. There are just too many driveways and streets accessing South Court in the one block between Stirbridge and Hartford. Many of those serve more than one entity. Pinewood Drive serves 64 families, their guests, and service vehicles. Because of the large number of access points that are so close to each other, and the fact that there's no left turn lane in this area, and this is the narrowest portion of South Court Street, it is difficult and disruptive to the flow of traffic to make a left, a left turn in either direction. I had an experience with this last week. As I was trying to exit the street, a UPS truck was blocking the drive with several cars stopped behind him. He wanted to turn into the vets' drive, which is only a few feet north of ours. He couldn't make his turn because someone was in the vets' drive trying to turn left onto South Court, but there was steady southbound traffic on South Court. Then one southbound car wanted to make a left turn into our drive and stop beside the UPS truck. This caused total gridlock. Residents turning left into our street can cause backups nearly to the traffic light, and drivers get impatient and often go on the berm to pass on the right, since there's no curb there. Additionally, there's a significant limited site distance to the south of Pinewood, with northbound vehicles approaching at a high rate of speed. This is right in the area where they want to put the ATM kiosk driveway, which would compound the dangerous conditions. Those of you who were in Medina in the '70s, '80s, and '90s remember the huge population growth here. Along with that came more and more stores and businesses, many of them along North Court Street. Traffic became impossible to navigate, and accidents were too numerous to mention. It took 20 years and $20 million and two years of construction to finally fix the problem. We don't want South Court to become another North Court. The back portion of this property is only about 50 feet from the first four of our residential units. You may think that a bank kiosk is an unobtrusive use of this property, but remember, the KeyBank is only leasing the property. If the zoning is changed to C3, that would open that property to a wide range of commercial uses, such as a gas station or a restaurant with a drive-through. Those businesses would definitely negatively impact our property. The Planning Director and his staff recommended not to approve the rezoning, the property from R3 to C3. One very important reason that they gave not to approve the rezoning was that the full range of permitted and conditionally permitted uses under C3 would have a greater potential for negative impacts on the surrounding residential land uses. If C3 zoning is approved, the possibility exists that something could be built there in the future that would be a detriment to our property. We urge you to do the right thing for the residents living in this area, and follow the recommendation of your planning, planning director and his staff to deny the rezoning of this property.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition of the rezoning?
I'm Jim Bahr. I live at 35 Pine Wood, B-A-H-R. I'm going to revisit the blind area that's on Route 3, south, just south of our drive. It's about an eight, it's a tenth of a mile to that point. After that, further south, the street drops down where it makes it impossible to see a vehicle coming. Other than a semi-truck, you can, not a problem. As I pull out and check all the driveways that I have to, I pull out and start heading north. I look in the rearview mirror, and there's somebody right on my tail, and it's disturbing. On the other hand, coming home the same way, heading south, I come up to Pinewood, and I watch, I wait for the cars heading north. I see an opening. All of a sudden, another car vehicle comes over that blind spot, and you have to wait. And it really is fast. They come up faster than you can imagine. I realize a lot of drivers leave home without using common sense. They leave it there. I certainly hope the board uses that in your next decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes?
Yeah, I'd like to speak in opposition, if I may.
My name is Keith Ray. I live at 908 Laurel Glen's Drive. I'm not really, I'm about two miles from there because I run my dog up to the vet all the time. I also ride my bicycle down that way to Buckeye Woods. We have to think about some things that are deeply profound about the quality of life here. We have lots of traffic. We have lots of danger in that traffic. It's congested enough, and if we allow this camel in the nose of the tent, what will ultimately happen to the rest of that land there? I feel bad. I feel like I'm some sort of troglodyte. I mean, who isn't for progress? I feel like I've got to Medina, it's a pretty nice place, I'd like to keep it a nice place. I don't like the notion that I'm pulling up the ladder behind me. But I do like to say that the people who live there have the right to the quality of life they thought they were buying when they bought the property from the developer. Keeping faith with the developer, keeping faith with the citizens, keeping the property safe, not just for people, but for my dog, that's very important for me. Because my wife reminds me when I jog, if I don't come home with the dog, don't come home. Please, for the sake of my dog, and for the sake of the lungs of the citizens and the quality of life in Medina, don't allow this. There's an empty building that was a bank approximately across the street, if I remember right. Let them buy that and put their name in even bigger letters on that property.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition of the rezoning? Oh, we just have a handout?
Just a handout.
Oh, okay. Thanks for the handout. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition of the rezoning? All right, hearing done, the public hearing is closed. At this time, I'd like to call Eli Smeller and the Troop 514 Boy Scout troop to come and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everybody would please rise for their Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Starcher.
Here.
Coyne.
Here.
Hefinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Reading of minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of June 26, 2019 is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved at this time.
Second. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council this evening, and we will meet again, geez, I think it's the second to the last week in August.
That's right.
We get to go on break, that is. So we have a little time off. Health, Safety, and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report this evening.
Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, but we have legislation later, later tonight that was voted out of special legislation about a month ago. That is, the LBGT Protection Legislation that is on the agenda that we'll deal with later. And Councilman Hefinger and I did submit a request for council action on demolition to try to put one more step in the process of getting approval to demo a building that's, any building that's in the original village of Medina. And we are working with the administration to put that legislation together when we come back from recess. And lastly, I recently submitted a request for council action for us to update the comprehensive plan for council to review it and have the plan updated so that we can, we can hopefully avoid these issues of inconsistency that have arisen, and it's probably just time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Hefinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report at this time, and there's no meeting scheduled.
Water and Utilities, Mr. Starcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, no meeting scheduled.
Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, but I am scheduling a meeting sometime after the break to invite Armstrong Cable so they can come in and show us their plan for their loop, and so we can have a compare and contrast with the county's fiber loop network. And as an FYI, for those of you who live in the Forest Meadows area, the work that they're doing, where you see all the flags around the tree lines and things like that, that is for the Armstrong version of the fiber loop that's coming, they're starting to work their way from the northeast side and into the city.
Thank you. Request for council action, we have 19-121 Intensive Supervision Probation Grant renewal for the Muni Court. 19-122 Expenditure over $25,000 for Chippewa Roofing through the Service Department. 19-123 Expenditure over $25,000 for Main Street Lighting Service Department. 19-124 Purchase of a 2020 Freightliner Rear Loader Refuge Truck for the Sanitation Department. 19-125 Grant Application Assistance to Firefighter Grant Fire Department. 19-126 2020 Tax Budget. 19-127 Easements for West Smith Road Reconstruction Phase III. 19-128 Engine House Community Room Permit Approval. 19-130 Sale and Removal of Home at 347 North Huntington. And we have one item for the Special Legislation Committee, which is 19-129 Update of the Comprehensive Plan. Reports of Municipal Officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second round of the parking deck bids came in today. The plan is to have a committee of the administration and council go through those, and when that committee is ready for a recommendation, we'll call council back, probably for a meeting before you come back at the end of August is my, my hope. The Medina Community Band is offering free concerts every Friday night in July. These are weather-dependent, and they start each Friday evening at 8:30 PM on the square. The Farmer's Market is each Saturday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on the square. Ladies Night Out on the Square is Thursday, July 11th, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Art in the Park on the Square is Sunday, July 21st, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then on July 22nd at 5:30 here at the Council Rotunda, there will be a public input meeting at Medina City Hall for the Combined Courthouse proposed project of combining common pleases and municipal courts up on Public Square, and the public is invited to that meeting. There's a movie night on the square sponsored by Cool Beans Cafe on Saturday, August 10th, from 9:00 PM to 11:00 PM. A fair on the square craft show, August 11th, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Main Street Medina Signature Event, Medina Fest, on Public Square, Saturday, August 24th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And then last but not least, the National League of Cities has asked small cities of populations 50,000 or less to pass a proclamation, as well as submit information as to what makes our small city special. And staff, staff is working on that, but the proclamation reads, "City of Medina Proclamation, National League of Cities, Small Cities Month, July 2019." Whereas small cities and towns under 50,000 population are the home to millions of Americans and constitute the vast majority of municipalities across the United States. And whereas small cities and towns strive to strengthen their communities through the provision of services and programs to improve the quality of life for all citizens. Whereas the federal government is an essential partner in the success of small cities and towns and must be encouraged to continue to support programs and legislation that strengthen small communities. And whereas state governments are partners in the success of small cities and towns and must be encouraged to continue to support key programs and legislation that strengthens the communities. Whereas organizations, businesses, and citizens are partners in the success of small cities and towns and must be encouraged to continue to grow in their efforts to make small communities a viable choice for people to live in. And whereas during these challenging economic times, the need for a renewed intergovernmental partnership to support essential public services is more important than ever to ensure the safety and growth of small-town America. Whereas the National League of Cities President and the Small Cities Council of the National League of Cities have declared July 2019 as Small Cities Month. Now for, now therefore, the council and the mayor of the city of Medina to hereby proclaim July 2019 as Small Cities Month and encourage President Trump, Congress, state governments, organizations, businesses, and all citizens to recognize this event and to work together this month and throughout the year to invest in small cities and towns to better the lives of all citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, we have a budget hearing later this week. I do not expect this large of a crowd, but you never know. And we will be discussing the tax budget later during this meeting, and in the interest of time, I will pass.
Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Chief Kinney, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items to note for council and the public this evening. This Friday, July 12th, we have a couple of ribbon cuttings. We do these jointly with Main Street Medina and the Medina Chamber of Commerce. So our first one is at 1:00 PM for Molly's Fashion Boutique and FunTastic Toys. Those are both grand reopenings. Both of the stores are relocating. The fashion boutique is moving up front, and the toy store is moving in the back. Both spaces are under a major renovation, and the fashion boutique is expanding. And then at 2:00, we will go over to Candy Apple &amp; Company for a business expansion project at 23 Public Square, which is unit number 11. That's in town center, so we hope that council will be able to join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mr. Willey Parks, Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report.
Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to advise the citizens, the last phase of our East Smith reconstruction project is going to happen starting this Friday, and that's to install the decorative crosswalks at the intersection of Broadway and East Smith. It'll just be for this weekend. We're going to start work on Friday, and everything will be opened Monday morning. It won't affect Smith. Smith will stay open. However, starting Friday morning, you will not be able to go north or south on Broadway from Smith. We will have traffic assistance in the afternoon to help with the rush hour, and everything will be opened on Monday morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would defer my report.
I thought you were going to talk about the snow, but that's good that you're not. Notices, Communications, and Petitions, we just have one, a liquor permit not to object to the issuance of a new D2 and D3 permit to Chan Coat LLC, 871 North Court Street.
Move not to object.
Second, not to object.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public will be admitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair in a reasonable time limit, approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time on anything else except the nondiscrimination legislation? If so, raise your hand. We got one, yes, okay. Come on down. This is like The Price is Right.
My name is Stacy Baker. The address is 321 North Elmwood in Medina. I came here tonight to update the city council and the mayor on the community garden and education center. So we have just talked to Scott Miller with the county commissioners, and we are planning to sign our lease on the 26th, and we plan to break ground on the first week of August.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address council?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dale Hartle. I'm the president of Ohio Regional Development Corporation. We're located at 200 Main Street, Kusshaktan, Ohio. We administer this community housing program for the city of Medina and Brunswick. I have a very brief presentation on fair housing rights and issues relating to that. Because the city of Medina and Brunswick was awarded several hundred thousand dollars during this past year for community housing improvement programs to be done, the federal government and the state of Ohio require that fair housing information be presented. I have passed out some brochures here earlier this evening. There will be more available if you choose to have, request some later. Fair housing is a right of everyone in the United States. In 1866, the first Civil Rights Act was passed, and that was to guarantee fair housing and civil rights for the people of the United States. About 100 years later, in 1968, the Civil Rights Act, Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act, was passed. It was amended again in 1988, and in succeeding years, other legislation took place that made that the law of the land and so on. In 1965, Ohio was the first state in the Union to pass legislation that was comparable to the federal legislation. In 1992, Ohio enlarged its recommendations on, or its law regarding fair housing. Very essentially, fair housing says that people are not to be discriminated against on the basis of several things. They should not be discriminated against on the basis of their race, their religion, their color, their national origin, their familial status, or their disability. And in Ohio, Ohio has increased that and said that if you are a military person, you cannot be discriminated against at all, as well. What types of federal housing and refusals do those represent? Refusals to rent or to sell to people? Discrimination in terms and conditions? Or the privilege of sale, advertising, denying availability, blockbusting, and steering failure to make reasonable accommodations, lending discrimination, and so on? We are not attorneys. We don't practice law. We provide information. If you feel that you have been discriminated against, we refer you to the Ohio Civil Rights Commission, and they deal with that as, as they deem is the best thing to do. We thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. The city of Medina and Brunswick has received approximately $600,000, a little over $500,000 in housing programs that will aid the low-to-moderate-income families of these communities. And so this is a requirement, this information be given. Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council, members of administration, and members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Skip.
Skip Barron, 536 North Broadway Street. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Community Design Committee in reference to the rezoning request on South Jefferson Street. And basically, I'd like to remind the council of our position on that, that we've already spoken a number of times, so I'm not going to go into it, other than to remind council that the Community Design Committee, which I'm a board member, and that they have asked me to speak, is opposed to that rezoning.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, we have introduction and consideration of ordinance's resolutions. At this time, I'd like to call Eli Schmeller down to the front to give him a resolution by becoming an Eagle Scout. We have a resolution here that we would like to adopt on council, and I'll read it to you first, and it's a resolution congratulating Eli Schmeller attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Eli Schmeller is currently a member of Troop 514, and whereas, as a result of considerable hard work in the areas of citizenship, physical fitness, character, and leadership development, Eli Schmeller received Eagle Scout Award, the highest award obtainable in scouting. And now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Medina, Ohio, that the Medina City Council hereby commands Eli Schmeller for his outstanding contribution to his community and Boy Scout Troop 514 in obtaining the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. That a signed copy of this resolution shall be presented to Eli Schmeller in recognition of his hard work and dedication in obtaining this award.
It is my great honor, because I've known Eli for many years since he was at Sidney Fenn Elementary School, to make the motion to approve the resolution congratulating Eli.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Resolution 99-19 passes 7-0.
Congratulations. Okay, wait, wait, wait. Now, we normally ask of what your scouting project was, so you can tell us how you obtained your Eagle Scout Award.
Well, my project, I planted a few trees for San Francisco Savior at their cemetery on Waymouth Street. And so basically, the trees just help block out the traffic for the mourners at the cemetery. So, yeah.
Well, thank, that's a great project. Congratulations. Okay, we have ordinance 100-19, ordinance authorizing the payment to GenMet Construction LLC for the private home rehabilitation at 3877 Miller Drive, Brunswick, Ohio, as part of the fiscal year 18 chip grant program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and ordinance, Mr. Mendel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for a chip project, a private rehab at 3877 Miller Drive in Brunswick, Ohio. In order to execute this project and get the contractor paid, it's approximately $25,000, a little over $25,000. We recommend the emergency clause to expedite the payment of the money from the City of Medina to the contractor to permit them to have more capital to continue to apply for a bid on chip projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 100-19 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 101-19, ordinance adopting the City of Medina Community Development Black Grant Program Citizen Participation Plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Mendel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is related to our CDBG programs, the money that we receive from the state of Ohio for various projects, our CDBG allocation, chip program, various projects such as that. It is required by the state of Ohio that we have a public participation plan on the books, which is typically good for five years. Our previous one has expired, so we need to approve a new one, which would be good through January 14th, or be good for the additional five years. Emergency clause is requested so we can have it on the books to be consistent with the rules by the state of Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 101-19 passes 7-0.
Resolution 102-19, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for grant assistance with the United States Department of Homeland Security for a 2018 AFG Operations and Safety Equipment Grant for the fire department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and resolution, Chief Painter.
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is for homeland security to replace our 15-year-old breathing air tanks. If awarded, it'd be valued at $464,000. We requested the emergency clause because the grant cycle is going to close while you guys are on summer break here.
It's not really break, but yes, okay. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the resolution?
Starcher.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 101-19 passes 7-0.
Resolution 103-19, a resolution adopting the tax budget of the City of Medina, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2020, and submitting the same to the Medina County Auditor.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, we've already started our budget process, but this is the state's process that they lay out for us. We have to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the resolution?
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the resolution?
Starcher.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the resolution?
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 104-19 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 105-19, ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and to award a contracted successful bidder for the South Broadway Street reconstruction project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the project, the South Broadway with the brick streets. This is a request to authorize us to advertise and bid. I would remind council, this project in total is $1,245,500. It's our project estimate. Of that amount, $478,000 will be provided through Ohio Public Works Grant.
And just to reiterate, on the Brick Road, we did a rebid or a re-engineer estimate on the cost of the bricks. Originally, it was about $234,000, and now it is?
Now, we're down, we believe it's going to be less than 200. I think we're at like 175, 180.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. Great. Is there any other discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 105-19 passes 7-0.
Resolution 106-19, a resolution authorizing the mayor to file an application for grant assistance with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT Municipal Bridge Program for the replacement of the South Prospect Street Bridge.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you. As councilor member, several years ago, we contracted with ODOTs to do our annual bridge inspections. This year, they come out every year with a targeted bridge list. This year, the South Prospect Street Bridge made that list, which means that it's eligible for funding through the Ohio Municipal Bridge Program. It's a competitive grant, and I don't know that we'll get it, but now that we are at least eligible, we'd like to go ahead and apply and try and get funds to repair or replace that bridge.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Resolution 106-19 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 107-19, ordinance rezoning the properties located at 216, 222, and 226 South Jefferson Street from R3 High Density Residential to MU Multi-Use.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Mendel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a rezoning request that went to the Planning Commission on April 11th. That information and packet decision was passed along to the city council. City council reviewed at the Finance Committee level on May 13th, 2019, public notice hearing. Then, we had the public hearing in front of city council on June 24th, 2019, and we are here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the adoption of the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
No.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
No.
Hefinger.
No.
Lamb.
No.
Rose.
No.
Shields.
No.
Ordinance 107-19 fails six nays one yays.
Ordinance 108-19, ordinance to approve and adopt and enact current replacement pages for the codified ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? I guess this is me. These are the codified ordinances that we publish and have of record in the City of Medina, and every year, we have to update them, of course, because we pass new laws in the city and new ordinances and new resolutions. So this is the codified ordinances and adopts those ordinances that we adopt and put them in a codified form, so everybody can join our website and read them all. And I know everybody likes to read the ordinances, so is there any further discussion? We just go through so many of them. We're at 108 this year, so hopefully, everybody keeps reading them. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 108-19 passes 7-0.
Resolution 109-19, a resolution extending the intensive supervision probation grant for the Medina Municipal Court through the fiscal year 2020 and 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and resolution, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to address this and the next ordinance together because they are a pair. This is the grant that the court gets for the intensive supervision probation program, and we end up having to do an emergency clause every time because of the mechanism for this grant.
Discussion on emergency clause in resolution? Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to address this and the next ordinance together because they are a pair. This is the grant that the court gets for the intensive supervision probation program, and we end up having to do an emergency clause every time because of the mechanism for this grant. When it's applied for, by the time we get it, we need an emergency clause to accept it. The second ordinance, the companion ordinance, is on the pay scales, and just as Finance Director, I would prefer that that have an emergency clause, because otherwise, when it does become effective, we'll have to do a larger retroactive pay, and that's just more work for my department for no real reason.
Understood. Any further discussion on the resolution and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call a roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Ordinance 110-19 passes seven zero.
Okay, now we're to ordinance 111 and 112. I think that's most people here to participate, I guess, in that ordinance, and what I'd ask is, I'm going to have people come up and speak. Try to limit your comments to five minutes, of course, if you could. We'd like to keep the process moving. Now, everybody, if you have a group of you in a specific group, I hope you appointed a spokesperson to express your ideas or concerns regarding the ordinance 111 and 112. I'd ask that we all be orderly in our presentation. I'd ask that there's no jeering at people, because we're all, you know, adults and professional here, hopefully, and everybody has their own opinions, and that's what America's about, of course, is everybody giving their opinions, and we're going to allow everybody to give those opinions, and we'd like to do that in an orderly fashion. So, with that said, is there anybody that wishes to address ordinance 111 and 112 at this time? Yes, ma'am. State your name and address, so it can be entered into the minutes.
Yes, my name is Pamela Miller, 450 Woodland Drive, Medina. It's been a year since we asked council to enact the law under consideration tonight, an LGBTQ nondiscrimination ordinance, and we applaud your willingness to take up this request and bring it to fruition. Now, these young people who are coming forward are holding up the many, many letters of support, most of them, that you received during these past months that this has been under consideration. We are here because of the courage of Sandy Vardell and Amy Demlow of OutSupport, who want their transgender sons to live in a community that gives them the same rights as others, because of Jen Ailer, who with the full support of the Medina City Schools, works with LGBTQ high school students in the GSA, the Gender Sexuality Alliance, because of Joe Metezeski, who wants his daughters to grow up in a community where their dads won't be considered second-class citizens, and with the help of Equality Ohio that works across the state on behalf of Equality for LGBTQ Ohioans. Put yourselves for a moment in the shoes of an LGBTQ individual and imagine the sadness, the hurt, knowing that you might be fired or might not even get a job because you're gay or transgender, or that you might not be able to find a house or an apartment because of your sexual orientation or gender identity, or even, or that you and your family are not welcome at a certain establishment, or even in the church pews at some houses of worship, or that some people still rely on archaic explanations rather than biology and chemistry to explain sexual orientation and gender identity. Now, ask yourselves, can you in good conscience allow that to be the norm in the city of Medina? You've heard support from many people, from allies, from families, from clergy, from LGBTQ persons, some of whom have spoken out for the first time in their lives. You've also heard from the doubters, the haters, the what-if'ers, and those who say, "Don't rock the boat. We're a tolerant community. There's no need for any new law." But the fact is, even if we consider ourselves a welcoming community, the law currently allows LGBTQ discrimination. This new law simply asserts that LGBTQ people will now have the same protections as every other resident in Medina in housing, employment, and most public accommodations. We have worked together with you this past year to craft an acceptable ordinance. Granted, we would have preferred to see you pass the ordinance that came out of the Finance Committee on June 24th, and it's important to note that revisions made since that time carve out special privileges for churches. I'd like to believe that there are congregations in Medina that don't feel the need for such protection, but it saddens me to know that there are some who just do not want to serve LGBTQ people in commercial settings. Even Pope Francis said recently to a gay man, quote, "We are not all human beings. We are all human beings and have dignity. It does not matter who you are. You do not lose your dignity. There are people that prefer to select or discard people. These people do not have a human heart." You have an opportunity to take a stand. Passing this ordinance, as well as the intimidation ordinance, is an epic moment for Medina and should be hailed as a major demonstration of our commitment to diversity. Thank you.
Thank you. explain what these ordinances are, so everybody understands what we're talking about, because it did go through an evolution. So, Mr. Huber, I know you've been involved in the process. If you can explain both ordinance 111 and 112, just to, I guess, educate all of us through the process that we've been through, so that they understand when people talk, what are we really talking about? So, thank you.
These two ordinances were drafted to provide protection to LGBTQ individuals with respect to public accommodation, housing, and employment, so that if a person applies for a job, they cannot be turned down for the job or fired from a job simply because they're gay or lesbian or LGBTQ. Same applies with respect to housing, renting, and applies with respect to public accommodation, which primarily involves services and goods. I think everybody recognizes the fact that there's an impasse and a divide between some religious conviction and some religious belief with some churches and what the LGBT legislation seeks to accomplish. The First Amendment Constitution provides a broad level of protection to churches with respect to their religious convictions, and so there is, at this point, a real uncertainty in the law as to how LGBT legislation should work with the religious conviction, essentially against that kind of consideration, because that's how some churches regard the issue. And at this point, given the lack of legal authority, case law, statutory law, there is a certain amount of exemption accorded to church beliefs. So, in the Finance Committee meeting we had, attorneys for the Catholic Diocese specifically ejected to the municipal ordinance directing them as to what they shall do at their church or their church campus in connection with these issues. At this point, this is a new area of law. This is exactly the reason why I've been saying from the beginning that the issue really needs to be addressed by courts and state and federal legislators, because it's going to take that kind of horsepower to figure out where the lines should be on these issues as it involves church belief and the legislation itself. At the municipal level, because it's the beginning stages and because of the uncertainty in this area, I felt that it was the most prudent thing to do, and so did the attorneys representing the city, to accommodate the church on these issues. I don't think the mayor and the council necessarily meant for this legislation to tell churches what they shall do on their church property or their church campuses, so there were exceptions made on those issues with respect to the churches on their property and on their campuses. And that is the exception that Pam Miller was just addressing. In some respects, the attorneys for the Catholic Diocese were not completely happy. I heard through the grapevine that some of the folks at Equality Ohio were not completely happy, so from a lawyer's point of view, this may be a great compromise. At any rate, this has been an attempt to thread a needle. We've tried to do the best we can.
Thank you, Mr. Huber. Thanks for you and the input of our attorneys and the involvement and collaboration, I guess, and, you know, I think the process went as smooth as it could go with respect to the opinions that everybody had. But again, as legislators, the only solution, you know, to get a law passed is probably compromise, which most people don't like that word, but as lawyers, we see it every day. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council on the ordinance 111 and 112 at this time? If so, yes, sir.
My name is James Knapp, KNAPP. I'm at 2615 Smith. I grew up in Fairlawn, just 10 minutes down Route 18. My first job was at the Arby's down here. Today, I represent TransOhio, which is Ohio's only statewide transgender equality group. I first want to say that I don't believe that we need a First Amendment carved out for churches in place of worship, because they're already protected by the First Amendment. Also, in regards to public accommodations, I just want to share a story really quickly, because I know we have a lot of people who want to talk, so I'll keep it brief. But I do have a friend, I won't name her because she's here, but she is a Medina resident, has been so for 27 years. We went out to Ruby Tuesdays about two years ago, and she was turned away, and she was told by the hostess there, "We don't seat your kind here." And that should never happen anywhere. I've heard time and time again, Medina does not discriminate. We don't need this kind of legislation, but unfortunately, it's happening, whether or not we see it or not. And what we did the next week is we all went together in a big group of people, and we sat at Ruby Tuesdays, and after that, it sort of became almost a protest, but after that, a weekly dinner party, which I actually really enjoyed, and we turned it around and made something good out of it, but, you know, if you're able to turn away people for just looking LGBTQ, there's no way to look trans or gay, lesbian, bisexual. There really isn't, and I do want to mention that I am an attorney in the Cleveland area. My private practice, I focus mainly entirely on LGBT clients. I'm also an ordained minister in the state of Ohio, and I went to a religious school. You may know it, it's Our Lady of the Elms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Coyne, members of council. My name is Chris Long. I'm the president of the Ohio Christian Alliance. I am a resident of Summit County, but I'm here to represent a number of concerned citizens of the city of Medina tonight. I'd like to read to you a letter that I submitted to you via email. We are in opposition of the proposed ordinance. Ohio Christian Alliance has been contacted by a number of concerned residents from the city of Medina concerning the proposed SOGI City Ordinance Number 717. I think you've changed the number since then. Citizens expressed their concerns with how quickly this comprehensive ordinance was being pushed through City Council for approval without an appropriate amount of public input and opportunity for comment from business leaders, members of the clergy, and citizens of the city of Medina. Some of those residents are waiting for their opportunity to share their concerns on Monday night and for future council meetings. They're here tonight. The proposed ordinance grants special rights beyond existing laws under the Ohio and U.S. constitutions. Ordinance 717, the LGBTQ Special Rights Protection Ordinance for the city of Medina, also presents a threat to religious organizations and societies that hold sincerely held religious beliefs. The language that is in the ordinance is ambiguous and undefined. The term gender identity or expression is not defined within law in either the Ohio or U.S. Constitution. The attempt to enforce such an ambiguous, undefined ordinance is fraught with problems for law enforcement and city officials. Laws that seek to equate sexual orientation and gender identity, SOGI laws, with classes such as race and sex, do so based on ambiguous and undefined terms. This ambiguity works to their advantage, as it helps to disguise the true, underlying, and nefarious motivation of such laws. They seek to intimidate by threatening with punitive lawsuits and boycotts those who disagree with them about their chosen lifestyle. I have spoken to some business leaders, members of the clergy, and some citizens who are intimidated to speak publicly for fear of reprisal. Thankfully, there are a number here tonight to speak out in opposition to the proposed ordinance, the Sexual Orientation, Gender Identity, or Expression Ordinance. We ask for the members of this council to vote no, or at a minimum, postpone the votes so that concerns of the residents of the city of Medina can be addressed with additional public hearings. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
This is going to be a surprise to some of you here. I'm the Reverend Keith Racy from 908 Laurel Glen Drive. You can recognize my house. It has the big gay pride flag and the United Nations flag hanging from the porch. That's my place. And also, I've got two signs that say Black Lives Matter, so, just so you don't worry with it. And I also have a sign that says, "Hate, hate has no home here." I want to talk about growing up in a Roman Catholic community right near Our Lady of Mount Carmel Roman Catholic Church in Temperance, Michigan. The whole damn block was Roman Catholic. The convent was down there. The rectory was down there, and the best thing was the Boy Scout Troop. Troop 93 was in Our Lady of Mount Carmel. What a beloved community that was. I did not realize that there were so many different kinds of boys, let alone, we were too young for girls. The first person that I made friends with was probably the only Jewish boy in the entire community, and he's still my friend now. What we're trying to create everywhere where we live is a beloved community, a community which is even more diverse than that one, one which includes a wide variety of human beings. The scholasticism of the Roman Catholic Church, I believe, is misguided and about the nature of human sexuality. The incarnation, because I can speak theologically, because I went to graduate school at Yale. I have a theological education. The incarnation is that God's inner being is being revealed in nature. There is a wide variety of sexual expression in nature and in human beings. Some people are born with mixed-up phenotype and genotype. About 1% or maybe a little less are born with ambiguous or ambivalent genitals. We have to make room for what God has revealed in nature. In some species, some individuals who are male have maternal functions. In other species, God has revealed that when the species is under ecological extremity, individual species members switch gender so that the species will go on. This was not known in the time of Thomas Aquinas or in Aristotle. It is known now, and we need to adopt ourselves to modern and postmodern ideas that reflect the majesty of the diversity of God's creation. It is really very widely diverse. Two of my teachers were Roman Catholic theologians who struggled all their life with LGBT identity. The Reverend Dr. Henry Nowen is still a famous theologian, a practical theologian who taught counseling. Sister Margaret Farley also struggled. She taught the Introduction to Christian Ethics class. There is still a Henry Nowen society that keeps his memory alive for his ability to interpret the desert fathers and mothers in ways that made sense to people who know psychology but not theology. So, this diversity of viewpoints has been endorsed by Pope Francis when he was reported in the National Catholic Reporter on January 10th, 2016. Have you met with a gay man and saying, "God made you that way?" And when he was questioned about whether that was okay, he said, "Who am I to judge?" Were Reverend Dr. Nowen and Sister Farley responsible, committed folks? Yes, they were. Any tradition would be proud to have these people as part of it. Is it my job to evaluate or judge their commitment or their responsibility? No. Who am I to judge? Love is love. It's hard to find today. We're in our little camps divided, and on the Facebook, there is a great deal of fear about this issue. There is no need to have fear about it. If you don't know, I haven't been anywhere where there's bathrooms that say whatever, maybe you need to get out a little more. We have a restroom here which says, "Woman's restroom," and the ones to the left said, "Restroom." So, I knocked, and went in, and guess what? It was empty. It's no, who's been to France? If you're uncomfortable with whatever, don't go to France. When I was in Boy Scout Troop 93, socially, emotionally, we were adolescents, and so the first dirty joke I was told in my life when I was 12 was by Robert Zach, my good Jewish friend. When we're concerned more about where people are going to go to the bathroom, that's, that's socially, emotionally, that's a developmental level, about 12 or 13 years of age. We're older than that now. We can deal with these issues more maturely now. We can choose to not let the fear of the primal brainstem rule us and let the most developed part of our brain, the forebrain, take over and remind us that we are all human beings, and nothing is alien to God. Finally, I want to close, and my French is extricable, so please forgive it. There's a famous French Jesuit theologian named Pierre Thélyard D. Chardin, and he wrote this. "Someday, after mastering the winds, the waves, the tides, and gravity, we shall harness for God the energies of love. And then, for a second time in the history of the world, humans will have discovered fire." Thank you.
I'm Dr. Kristin Kronz, K-R-I-S-T-I-N-K-R-A-N-Z, 7530 Deer Path Trail. As a family physician, I've committed my life's work to taking care of all as if they were my family. There's nothing that changes that for me, not a person's race, not their religion, not their disability, not their gender or gender expression, not their sexual preferences. In my over 25 years of practice, I know that what unites us is our humanity. We must respect and indeed embrace our diversity. We must protect those who need protections. Sadly, there is much discrimination in our world. My oldest child graduated from Medina High School in 2012. She and I personally know and are aware of many others, students at that time, that were not currently comfortable, nor did they feel safe to come out while living in this community. We're not aware of any of them that have returned. I'm glad that the situation is changing and that students now feel comfortable being able to express themselves more fully. I will always honor my Hippocratic oath. That is in part why I'm here today, and I'm honored to have been asked to speak on behalf of, I think, probably, the entire healthcare community, who pledges to take care of people without discrimination. We know that exposure to violence has negative effects both on education and health. A few facts from the CDC. Children who identify as LGBTQ, in a given year, 10% will be threatened or injured with a weapon on school property. 34% will be bullied on school property. 28% were bullied electronically. 23% will experience sexual dating violence. LGBTQ youth have a higher incidence of depression, suicide, and substance abuse. LGBT youth have a five-time higher rate of attempted suicide, and this ultimately is 30% of that group. We all have certain rights as guaranteed by our Constitution, simply because of our humanity. The core purpose of government explicitly recognized by the U.S. Constitution, to establish justice, to promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty. We cannot truly be free if we do not have certain rights protected. These include our economic rights, as put forward by FDR in the Second Bill of Rights. In the Second Bill of Rights, everyone has the right to a job, an adequate wage and a decent living, a decent home, medical care, economic protection during sickness, accident, old age, or unemployment, and a good education. Our government must be there to protect our rights. That is your duty. There can be neither democracy or freedom without safety and security, including economic security. I pray that you, as our government officials, will honor your commitment to our Constitution and protect the rights of all with specific laws that prohibit discrimination. No labels are necessary. It's simply our humanity that affords us these rights. Thank you in advance for taking your commitment to justice and freedom seriously. Laws are designed as protections. Anything that compromises our rights requires the protection of our government. This law is just the first step in what will be a long process of education and commitment to the path from tolerance to acceptance to celebration of our differences, including gender expression and sexual preferences. Let's make Medina a place where all of our children, and indeed, all of us, can feel safe, happy, and prosper. safe, happy, and prosper.
Mr. President and members of City Council, my name is Matt Wiederhold, 426 East Liberty Street. I've been a resident of Medina for about nine years. My husband and I have purchased and restored a total of three historic homes within the city. We have made significant investments, both personally and professionally, within this community that we call home. I'm here tonight as a friend, resident, coworker, community partner, and community champion to ask that you uphold the affirmative vote of support by the City of Medina Special Legislation Committee and the City of Medina Finance Committee and approve the anti-discrimination ordinance proposed for the City of Medina. Tonight, you have the responsibility, as representatives of all residents in the City of Medina, to vote in favor of the proposed anti-discrimination ordinance, which would protect the basic human rights of my fellow LGBTQ brothers and sisters. As a member of the LGBTQ community, I would like to know that my elected officials are willing to offer civil rights protections for all residents, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. Civil rights are constantly evolving. Today, can you imagine someone saying, "You can't buy that house because you're a woman. You're being fired because you're a Jew. You can't shop here because you're African-American." Replace woman, Jew, or African-American with LGBTQ, and that is the reality that our community members face every day. If necessary, refuse to sell me a house because I can't afford it, not because I'm gay. Fire me because I'm not good at my job, not because I'm gay. Refuse to let me support your business, because honestly, I don't know why anybody would let me not support their business. Why would you turn away money? I find it reprehensible that the local Catholic Church opposes this legislation. They want to maintain the option to fire staff or refuse to serve the LGBTQ community in their house of worship. They're pushing back on you to preserve their choice to discriminate. That is deplorable. They lied to you two weeks ago when they stated that they just heard about the proposed legislation, when their own documents proved that they knew about it and were discussing it in October of last year. A few weeks ago, several of you stated that you didn't think you should have to pass this ordinance and that it should be left to the Supreme Court to do the heavy lifting. You know, I wish you didn't have to pass this legislation either. But at this time, the federal government has no interest in supporting or protecting my community. However, you, as our elected officials, have the opportunity to show your support for the LGBTQ residents of Medina who live here, who work here, who pay taxes here, who voted you into office, and to look to you for leadership in the community. Gentlemen, I appreciate the attention this legislation has been given by the city and council, and I hope that we can count on you to support equality for all, including those of us in the LGBTQ community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hanwell, President Cohen, and all members of City Council for allowing me to speak tonight. Ancient Greek philosopher Aristotle proclaimed that the only stable state is the one in which all people are equal before the law. Tonight, I stand before you as a mother, business owner, and above all, an advocate for the acceptance of the LGBTQ community in the workplace. In addition to my work, I stand up for numerous causes and organizations that I believe do great work for the community. Some of these causes are Running to Be Well, Feeny Medina County, 4H, Tunnels to Towers, and Medina County SPCA. My experience in volunteering with the above-mentioned organizations has been premised on success by a diverse group of people coming together for the greater good. I am here tonight to present another cause that I believe is important to this community with a call to ask the public to unite once again for the greater good. As many of you are aware, the following involuntary characteristics are punishable by termination in the workplace in our community. These include in the City of Medina, sexuality, age, gender, religion, and ethnicity. This body is convened to debate and consider a change to our law. America is the greatest melting pot in the world. This diverse nation has achieved great advances in science, technology, health, and education because of the ample opportunities that have been made available to all of us as the American dream. Americans, black and white, victoriously defeated the Axis powers in World War II. Americans, men and women, men and women, victoriously worked to make America the first nation to land on the moon. Americans, straight, gay, and transgender, continue to serve our country's military to advance American ideals of liberty and equality. I ask you to continue the advancement of the American dream to all of our city's residences, regardless of sexuality, age, gender, religion, or ethnicity. How can we, as a community, continue to grow and move forward when we are not teaching our children the two most important lessons of love and acceptance? In the year of 2019, it is past time that we take a stand in support of our LGBTQ community members. As a mother and businesswoman, I have a personal appreciation of this bill presented here tonight. Before graduating high school, my son Caleb made the brave decision to come out to me. The biggest shock to me was the concern that my son was too afraid to share who he was to his own family for so many years. In feeling alone, a son whom I believed to be completely confident in himself was struggling with his sexuality and even considering ending his life out of concern how he would be perceived in his political party and the Catholic faith. Five years later, he is a law student in Washington, D.C., where he is learning the basic constitutional framework that this nation is built upon, that establishes equality to all. As he has explained to me, without legal protection, people cannot be treated equal in the workplace. As a business owner, I have had the privilege of hiring a wonderful young man to be a customer service representative. Every day, I get numerous compliments in favor of his work ethic and wonderful personal affection towards all clients. If I had let prejudice and intolerance affect my decision in the hiring process, I would have missed out on the opportunity to gain an excellent staff member that provides so much to my business. I strongly urge you all to ignore labels that divide us and hire the best and brightest for our businesses. No involuntary characteristics should stand in the way of a qualified candidate. Statistically speaking, LGBTQ supportive policies in the workplace can have positive impacts on business performance and community development. The Williams Institute of UCLA Law School reported that LGBT anti-workplace discrimination laws lead to five significant factors. Improved workplace relationships, more openness about being LGBT, increased job satisfaction, improved health outcomes, and greater job commitment. You choose what you want to believe and you see what you want to believe. Society tells you what the norms are, and it is easy for one just to not question and go along with it. However, until you are headed with reality, you do not really know how to stand up and question it. I urge everyone to listen and speak to a member of the LGBTQ community and learn about the major impact legislations such as this would mean. My husband, Bill, and I tried to instill upon both our children, Caleb and Hannah, the notion of unconditional love and to never be afraid to do what is right. Understanding that the right decision is not always the most popular decision is perhaps the greatest lesson a mother could ever teach to her children. In respect to this bill, as a community, we all know what is right. What is right is building bridges and not walls amongst ourselves in striving to tackle President Lincoln's call to action in his Gettysburg Address, to continue the unfinished work, in striving for a more perfect union. Let us be the role models for the next generation in building a community premised upon acceptance and respect for all. Thank you.
I am the Reverend Lornell Brayley. I live at 80 High Point Drive, Medina, Ohio. I am a member ordained in the Evangelical Lutheran Church in America. There are five ELCA churches in Medina County. Every three years, we gather together with representatives from all of our congregations in Chicago to meet and discuss church policy and social issues. And we adopt social statements that help our churches understand how to deal with different situations. And those social statements, they take several years to develop. They seek input from all of our churches across the entire United States. They go through several reiterations, and then they are brought before this group of representatives of all the churches. We have a social statement on LGBTQ, and the part of, one part of that statement is that we encourage members, all members of our congregations, to support legislation to prohibit discrimination in housing, employment, and public service. I'm just here to represent the entire ELCA of the United States, saying that we would support this issue.
I live at 1150 Sharon Copley Road in Sharon Center. My office is down the street at 225 East Liberty Street here in Medina. I may be presumptuous, but my assumption is that none of the men, the white men sitting in front of us, would be considered members of a minority. I'm Jewish, and I consider myself a member of a minority. When I was in junior high school, a bully came up to me with a piece of paper on which he had written the word "kike" and asked me to eat it. When I was in high school, I was in the gym, the locker room, and I overheard a classmate of mine say to another, "And where's the little Jew?" When I was a new attorney, I was at a law firm, and a staff member asked me, "Is it true that Jews are buried standing up?" And when I pursued that comment, I learned that some people felt that Jews are buried standing up so that money, their money will not fall out of their pockets. I'm also gay, a member of that minority. As a member of this community, I think I've contributed time and money to many improvements in this community. I served on the hospice board for 10 years. I was on the Medina County District Library Board for over 10 years. I was one of the Medina County Commissioners, the park commissioners, doing what we could to improve the parks in this town. As a, while I was on the library board, the president, the executive director of the library, Bob Smith, who's here, received a letter which he gave to me. And this was almost 26 years ago, and this person wrote to him, unsigned. "I hardly think that it proper that a practicing homosexual of questionable character is the spokesman for the Medina Public Library." I refer to Ian S. Haberman, who appeared on Live on Five on Tuesday, the 29th of June. And this person went on to say, "I feel that Mr. Haberman is neither a moral or ethical person. At best, he is a pig who should not speak for your library." I don't know that the legislation that's before you will change people's minds or, you know, eliminate those kinds of hateful statements, but I certainly think your legislation would Just a few statistics, not to bore you more. Only 21 states offer employment nondiscretional, discrimination laws to LGBT workers. Transgender employees can be fired due to their gender identity in 31 states. 78% of transgender individuals have been subjected to workplace harassment. 35% of LGBT employees feel they must lie about their personal lives at work. 62% of LGBT individuals hear anti-LGBT slurs and jokes at the workplace. 43% of LGBT workers have experienced workplace discrimination. An encouraging statistic, 90% of Fortune 500 companies prohibit sexual orientation We've heard comments about the role of religion. For some reason, religion often winds up being on the wrong side of history. When the, when the 19th Amendment was being considered for adoption, the Bishop of Fall River, Massachusetts, spoke against it. He said not, because he not only feared that woman's position as queen over the household would be endangered by an interest in public affairs, but that even education would threaten it, because he pointed out, "Smartness is not becoming, women." We had a United States Senator speaking against miscegenation laws, saying, he wrote this. "Purity of race is a gift of God, and God, in His infinite wisdom, has so ordained it that when man destroys his racial purity, it can never be redeemed. Allowing the blood of the races to mix was a direct attack on the divine plan of God. There is every reason to believe that miscegenation and amalgamation are sins of man in direct defiance to the will of God." I would respectfully suggest that the Medina City Council be on the right side of history and adopt the ordinances that are before you. Indeed, I would ask you to subscribe to a motto that I read online, that we should be a community where diversity, acceptance, and participation lead us on a lifelong journey of spiritual growth. The word I left out was that we are a Catholic community, and that is the statement that is found online from the website of St. Francis Xavier Church of Medina. Thank you.
Amy Panchumarti, 889 Lawrence Street, Medina, Ohio. And I'm going to keep it brief because I have to go to the bathroom, as many of you probably do. And I know discrimination because I have lost 300--
Ma'am, ma'am, name and address, please.
Oh. Amy Panchumarti, 889 Lawrence Street, here in Medina. And I know discrimination because I've lost 300 pounds. Try and live in that other body, and you'll find discrimination. My daughter, Dr. Bonnie Waslick, helped start GSA. She went to India when she was 19, had a great group of friends over there. One of them happened to be LGBTQ. He was beaten to death. This is Alan Turig. I think I'm saying it correctly. This brilliant mathematician from England. Amazing. He's the man who cracked the Enigma Code. He went back to his native, Britain, who labeled him gay, gave him chemical castration, and he died a very young man. My cousin, who's gay, finally, I asked him, being ignorant, "So when did you decide to become gay? I heard the word "chose" earlier." And my cousin said to me, "When did you decide to become heterosexual?" I thought, "What are you talking about?" He said, "Wasn't that a natural process for you? Didn't you notice the guys?" He said, "So did I. I watched the football players the same as you were watching the football players." More than that, unless my imagination, unless my focus isn't strong enough, two things. I believe we said "and justice for all" when we put our hands on our hearts. And second of all, in the Bible, I do believe it says, "Love one another." That's the best quote I can come up with. Hi, Dr. Waslick. Bathroom.
Leah White, 3530 Huffman Road, Medina, Ohio. So, oh, yeah. I'm in Medina. Two years ago, I moved-- Two years ago, I moved here from one of the reddest and most traditionally conservative religious communities in our country. Interestingly enough, they have one of the only statewide LGBT protections, similar to what we would like to pass today. I believe our LGBT citizens keep high standards and have valuable contributions to make. They are prevented to do so due to discrimination. Discrimination equals hate, not love. Our LGBT citizens have been underserved for far too long, especially in pitting them up against religious communities. Are my basic needs being withheld because of my unpopular spiritual views on life? They're not. My basic needs are met. I do not like being villainized for my sincerely held beliefs. Why have some villainized the sinner here? Jesus did not. Not surprisingly, He pushed against the religious elite of His day, who had forgotten that they were also a sinner. They failed to live the two great commandments, to above all else, love God and love their neighbor. I do not want to be counted among the religious in my day, who would walk past their neighbor and prevent others their most basic of human needs. I believe how we treat people today matters more now and in the eternities than does being LGBT. The act of showing unconditional love and compassion is the mark of who I am as a Christian. This LGBT community has welcomed me with love as a religious conservative. I would much rather be seen out and open, a sinner in need of a Savior, than a closeted sinner with the illusion of moral righteousness. I urge the Medina City Council to provide our LGBT citizens the avenue to help legally protect themselves by passing this nondiscrimination ordinance today. Thank you.
I'm sorry, she's standing in front of the camera. If you could, ma'am, yeah. Do you see that camera behind you? Yeah, so that's taking a picture. Thank you.
My name is Mike Ryan. I live at 155 Rochon Drive, Medina, Ohio. The gentleman that spoke here a few moments ago is right. I'm white, and until Ohio did so, I'm not a member of any protected class. I am now, as a veteran, which I actually learned through this process. I did not know that. However, I don't think that I want to stand against this legislation. I don't want to say that I'm against it, because I know that the stories that have been told here, the stories that won't be told here, and all the stories that exist outside these walls are real, and they have brought real pain to people. But the gentleman should know that, as a boy, I was extremely heavy, and I was beaten regularly, and I was made fun of in school. I was afraid to go into the bathrooms, because I was afraid who was in there, and they were going to beat me in there, and no one would know. So I would caution people from looking at the outside of a person and determining how broken they are inside, because I understand it. I really do. In the beginning, this lady here said, "Put, try to imagine yourself in their shoes." I don't have to imagine. I know what it's like to be hated and to feel like I have no control over that. As a 49-year-old man, I feel that way today. I have a deep faith in my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and I feel persecuted about that every day, just because I may stand here in opposition, or just to say that I really wish you would take this legislation back to committee, and that you would review your verbiage, and that you would review the statements and understand, as the Law Director said, that there's a reason why constitutional scholars are still trying to figure out whose rights supersede whose. Regardless of whether you believe or agree with the fact that I believe the Holy Scriptures is irrelevant, because I do. I believe them with a deep passion, as passionate as you are about your cause, I am passionate about mine. And discrimination has no place in any society. Hate has no place in any society. And Jesus did say that we are supposed to love. Everybody who's made that statement is telling the absolute truth. But Jesus also said in the Bible, "If you love Me, you will follow My commandments." And there are commandments to living. And the Constitution was developed for that purpose. I have a right to practice My faith. The Constitution, I find it a little concerning that because a church stood up and said that they objected, that peace was changed. When I walk into a building, I have the Spirit inside of me, then that building becomes a church. When I leave the church, I take the Spirit with me. I don't leave it in the building. And then my home becomes an extension of the church, because Christ is in my home. And then when I go to work, work is an extension of the church, because Christ is with me. We see it in our country. The baker in Colorado has won in the Supreme Court twice. People are allowed to operate their businesses according to their faith. And that's why I am not going to ask you to not pass this legislation, because discrimination, again, it's mean, it's cruel, it hurts people. People feel pain. I feel pain. But I think we need to be more responsible with our words. We can't just treat it like a spaghetti noodle, throw it against the wall, and see if it'll stick. I'm not for that, but I am for, because nobody, this is a great community. I love living here, and that includes the fact that everybody in this room gets to say who they are and can be proud of it, and that they can have their events on the square, and then so can I. I think we're getting better at that. I think we need to keep moving in that direction. But to tell people how they run their business is the same thing as telling the church how to run its business, and it's not okay. Discrimination in hiring practices and firing practices, that's not okay either. So, yeah, there might, we need to do something about that, because you, you need to have a, Ohio is a will state. You don't need to have a reason to be fired. And I mean, so it's very, this is a very difficult thing. It's a very complex thing that we are navigating here. And the question becomes, whose rights supersede whose? Because some of the people that own and operate businesses here are hanging on by a thread. They can't afford a lawyer. And we do deserve it. We deserve legal representation, just like everybody else. We deserve to have a right to operate our businesses based on our beliefs. That's, that's, that's the law. And so I don't ask you to, to get rid of it. I don't ask you to not pass it. I ask you, take it back to committee, revisit the wording, and come up with something even better. That's what I ask.
Dr. Bill Smallman, 201 Rochon Drive, here in Medina. For 30 years, this is my adopted hometown. This has been a great education. I was frankly quite unaware of all the discussions that's been going on, and I thank you, Mr. President, for clarifying how much work has gone on behind the scenes and in other meetings, but frankly, I was unaware of it all. I think there's tremendous value in a meeting like this, where we come and express our hearts and, and share our hurts and our, and our convictions and all of these things, but I would love to have been a part of it a long time ago. I know efforts were made to advise the population of the meetings and all of that, so I missed it somehow or another. I was unaware until yesterday, reading the article in the paper about the rally and, and seeing that this meeting was going on tonight, and I'm glad to be here as a, as a part of it. I've never seen a copy of the intended legislation. Maybe it's been distributed somewhere. I looked carefully on the, on the really magnificent website that Medina has, and I, I found no notion of it or coming meetings. Maybe I missed something else. I don't know. We all have strong feelings, convictions, values, and they may be based on different things. We all have our own sources of, of our, our moral compass and where we make our decisions. Part of the glory of our democracy is respecting the right to be wrong, so that in any issue, whatever it is, when people disagree, one side thinks the others are wrong, and they think that, that we're wrong, but what we learn is that disagreement is not hatred, that we can sit down and talk. It doesn't mean we're going to resolve everything in, in one occasion, but the big problem that, that has been coming up over and over again is not so much the governable aspects of things. Yes, there are legal situations that need to be improved, but the big problem is attitude, and I, I don't know that law can fix that. Hearts need to be changed. I, excuse my, talked myself dry. We respect the right to be wrong, and we need to learn how to talk to each other to recognize, even in legislation like this, I'm sure there are things that, that I would be very supportive of. There are other things I'm frankly very fearful of, in ways that behavioral matters are imposed on a society that doesn't necessarily accept them. I've just returned from Oregon and California. A relative of mine works in a library and just deals with the chaos, even as simple a matter as public washrooms and, and having to post a sign, "We respect your pronouns," of people that don't want to be called he or she or whatever, and all the confusion and tension that results from that. I'm not sure that the way this legislation is prepared is ready for a vote. I personally would love to see it go back for more public discussion and more consideration of what, what the problem really is. One last thing, I observed in this morning's Gazette, two major stories were on the front page. One, of course, was very good coverage of the, of the rally that took place yesterday. I, I thought it was well presented. The other, of course, was the, the fourth world championship of the FIFA women's team in a game that I, I got home just in time to turn it on, to see that penalty kick and the rest of the game, the part that really counted. My fear is that legislation of this sort is going to bring it into women's athletics. Frankly, we've already seen this in women's track and field, where the men can compete, and they're walking away with the trophies. There are reasons why there are different sets of athletics, so that in some ways, this is really a hidden anti-feminist movement, not intentionally, of course, but as a, as unintended benefits or, or, what do they call it, collateral damage. I, I would ask for reconsideration of this and for, for how do we, how do we deal with attitudes, not just the legally adjustable things? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Danny, you want to go? No, ma'am, one second. No disrespect, but some people may have to use the restroom, so if somebody goes to use the restroom, don't be upset that they're trying to avoid seeing you, because I guess we're all getting older.
I have to go to the restroom. I'm guilty.
Okay. Take your hall pass, Danny. Okay, thank you.
I am Pam Branscombe, and that is the Reverend Pam Branscombe. I am ordained in the United Church of Christ. It is a church that ordained the first gay minister in this country in 1972, and that was the Reverend Bill Johnson, who has served our church well for decades. I have served, oh, 6480 Livia Lane, Medina. I have served congregations in three different states, and I have chosen to retire in Medina. The stories I heard in my office as pastor, in the congregations that I served over the decades that I spent in ministry in Nebraska and Michigan and Ohio, made me furious, broke my heart, made me feel helpless to help. And I think the thing that is most disturbing to me is when I listened to stories of my congregation members who served wonderfully in my congregations. They were gifted, loved members in my churches, who, in places before they found where I was the pastor, they had been humiliated and abused and spoken to in ways that I simply could not wrap my head around. And the most disturbing thing was that that didn't come out in public. It came from churches. It came from my colleagues in ministry in other denominations. So the most important thing I want to leave with you as an ordained person retired from ministry is that it's not the church that needs protection. It's the LGBT community who-- I could spend all night telling stories that would make you crazy. And it is my shame to be a part of a clergy community that has been a part of that. And there have been times when I have introduced myself as a pastor to somebody in the LGBT community, and they go, "Oh." And the unspoken question is, "Are you one of those, or are you safe?" Martin Luther King wrote a letter from prison to a bunch of white clergy, that'd be me, who were saying, "We're not ready for integration. We're not ready for all these laws that you're talking about. Society just isn't ready." Wait. But you know what? In that letter, he said, "Justice delayed is justice..."
Denied.
"...denied." So I'm here asking you not to stall, not to defer, but to pass this thing, so that I can be proud to have retired in Medina. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sue Simmons, S-Y-M-O-N-D-S. I live at 2884 Remsen Road, Medina, Ohio, 44256. Thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion on this legislation. Although I do not live in Medina City, I have two children who have graduated from Medina High School and a granddaughter who will be a senior at Medina High School there in September. I have a couple major concerns regarding the legislation. First, based on discussions in your committee meeting two weeks ago, members of this council have been working on this legislation for at least seven months with those who advocate for the legislation. Those who have issues with this legislation have become aware of the legislation much more recently. For example, a gentleman associated with the Cleveland Catholic Diocese was here for that meeting, and although his organization has concerns about the impact of this legislation on his church, he was told by a committee member that they had no obligation to bring the Cleveland Catholic Diocese or any other church into the discussions of the formulation of this law. This point was further emphasized by a demeaning comment about the Catholic Diocese-- This point was further emphasized by a demeaning comment about the Catholic Diocese by a member of this council. This is not representative of a council who welcomes input from all sides of an issue. Second, the anti-discrimination laws, there are anti-discrimination laws in place at state and national levels. This legislation seems in large part to be a duplication of those laws and represents a power play by certain groups. There certainly have been no major issues of discrimination against LGBTQ community in Medina, or I'm certain there would have been major press coverage of it in the Medina County Gazette and other papers. I cannot help but question why Medina City government feels this is an important issue that requires over seven months of review and research, when laws at higher levels of government already address many of these issues. At the committee meeting two weeks ago, the city law director spoke about his concern that Medina could not afford multiple lawsuits regarding this matter, since they only have four part-time lawyers on staff. The passage of this legislation is just a series of lawsuits waiting to happen. This is not the media coverage that Medina community needs, nor is it a way anyone in Medina who pays taxes for your salaries would like you to spend their money fighting lawsuits. This is especially true, since many of these issues are still being litigated at both the state, federal, and Supreme Court levels, and there's no guidance from them, no firm guidance at this time. My final concern, which has a true impact on me and everyone else whose children live outside of Medina City but attend Medina City schools, deals with gender identity. This legislation seems to state that children in Medina City schools within the Medina City limits must be permitted to use the facilities for the gender they identify with, regardless of their biological gender. Therefore, biological boys who self-identify as girls will be allowed to use the girls' restrooms, the girls' locker rooms, the girls' showers, and participate in all-girls' sports. Naked biological boys who identify as girls in a girl's locker room or shower seems totally inappropriate to me, and I'm sure there are many other parents who feel the same way. Likewise, biological girls who identify as boys would be using the boys' facilities. None of this even considers the impact of biological boys competing in girls' sporting events. Connecticut, which is a few steps ahead of us in terms of gender equality, is already seeing an increase in biological boys who identify as girls winning local and state girls' athletic titles. Not only, well, some of you may remember when girls' sporting opportunities were expanded to give girls' college sporting and scholarship opportunities under U.S. Title IX. This opportunity may soon be obliterated as more biological boys who identify as girls capture these titles. I urge you to vote no on this legislation. I believe more community awareness and input from both sides of the issue are needed. Thank you.
My name is Charles Raymer. I live at 141 South Prospect Street. Tonight, I'm representing the Bankers Row Historic Neighborhood Association, and as a neighborhood association, we embrace the core values of diversity and we promote harmony. I'm also here representing my son, Ryan, who is gay, and his loving partner, Christopher. Now, the active members of the Bankers Row Neighborhood Association, as a part of Medina's Ward One, firmly support the LGBTQ legislation currently being considered by council. We feel this is the time to act now, and responsibility lies with our community and elected officials. We urge all parties to work together and promote, to protect fair, safe, inclusive lives for all Medina's residents, regardless of their personal feelings involving others' rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Let your actions and the legislation in our city truly reflect the designation that we are so proud to fly in the banners throughout our city, "Hometown, USA." And let that designation stand for each and every citizen. Thank you. The Bankers Row Historic Neighborhood Association.
Thank you all for having me. My name is Joanne Campbell. I live at 111 Wood Glen Circle here in Medina. I'm speaking on behalf of the Medina Republican Liberty Caucus, as well as the mother of two daughters who are competitive athletes. Proposed Ordinance 717 is in direct conflict with the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution, which prohibits the state from creating or enforcing any law which seriously weakens the privileges or freedoms of its citizens, or deprives any person of life, liberty, or property. To be clear, we're not against the personal choices individuals make in any way. We are, however, opposed to this legislation, as it would strip business and property owners of their constitutional right to individual liberty regarding personal employment and control over their private accommodations. Section 717.05 would require public schools and facilities to allow biological males who identify with the opposite sex access to female-only designated areas and sports teams. I read this ordinance. This does not protect or support equality, but instead grants special privileges to a select group based on subjective factors rather than objective fact. As a result of enacting similar laws, litigation and lawsuits, like Sue said, are pending across the United States. And remember that without the ability to say no, there is no freedom. So we urge you to reconsider your position on this ill-conceived proposal. It's harmful, and I thank you.
My name is Ann Bednarski. My address is 105 Stirbridge Drive. I was born in Ohio, stayed till I was 22, went off to see the world, and came back to one of the most wonderful states I've seen, and I've seen a lot of the world. I had a wonderful visit with the mayor, who's my friend, and I voiced my concerns. I believe we are a progressive society. Things are emerging. Medicine, everything else is allowing many things to happen that didn't happen when our forefathers came here. This is the letter I wrote. I wonder if all of you received a copy of it. Okay? I'm going to read it for the audience. Dear Mayor Hanwell, I have read the content of the new ordinance, Chapter 717, and the accompanying documents. It seems to me that this new ordinance is redundant, as equal-opportunity employment and for fair housing laws already exist. It is my understanding that a public meeting to discuss the proposed change was scheduled for 6:00 p.m., but actually started at 5:30 p.m., and only the proponents of the LGBT constituency was in attendance. That in itself is discriminatory. Transparency is essential to problem-solving. The LBG choice has been around for centuries. As all citizens have choices of lifestyle for everyone, is clearly evident in the many, many diverse people we have in this community and indeed in this room. What I am trying to say is, if it's not broken, what do you have to fix? As a certified mediator trained by the American Arbitration Association, I cannot identify or discern a dispute for resolution. Many programs introduced are fueled by current fads. Who's going to be the first one to have the best law? People trying to get attention for their position, and are missing existing problems. The proposal reads as if you are anticipating problems and trying to alleviate them, but may I suggest, passing this ordinance is likely to be the cause of a currently nonexisting problem. The focus seems to be on individual lifestyle, but it should be on skills and experience. The focus seems to be, oh, excuse me. The document suggests changes, not specific changes, to schools. Schools have made so many accommodations, sometimes I fear the purpose of this institution is lost. I make that comment as a teacher and tutor for 47 years. Please seriously reconsider this ordinance. The people of Medina will appreciate you proceeding carefully, not hurriedly, and under intimidation. I would like to add, one of the classes I taught took every bully in this junior high school and put them all in my room. And the principal said to me, "You have more equipment in this room than any other teacher." And I said, "Take it away. Either I'm the custodian, or I'm the teacher." Many of those students were unriddling. We've learned a lot about drugs, and I worked very hard with those boys. One of them was gay, and he was proud of it, and I was proud of him, because he had to get along with a whole bunch of real tough guys, and they did it. And they all made progress. One day, I asked my class of 30 boys between 13 and 15, "Do you have anything you wish for? Do you want to get out of this special class?" And this one kid said to me, he said, "There's something I would really like to do." He said, "My father hates me because I'm gay, and I have a brother who's a football player. So my father beats me, he hates me." And I said, "We have to fix it, don't we?" Anyway, I asked him if there was something he would like to do, if he wished he could do something. And you know what he said? "I'd like to fix your hair in class." So I said, "Well, I have to really think about that." But then I decided, they all got along, and that's what we're, we seem to be splitting in this, in this drug, sex, gay, straight. And I said, I said to him, "You know, you can't cut my hair, and you can't curl it. You can only fix it." So he fixed it, and just the kind attention you are giving me. The rest of the guys, the tough guys, sat there, and they'd say, "Put another curl here," and they commingled, which is what I don't see happening. This is the last thing I had. I spent all day trying to find the Gazette, and I finally went to the library, who printed this letter, which you already seen. However, this made, this brought a tear to my eye, because the Gazette printed the title of this article as "Medina's Proposed LGBTQ Law Isn't Right for the City." That's not my feeling at all. I'm with the people that say, "Go back, clear it up, try some other things." That's what I have to say.
My name is Kathy Briggie. My address is 1074 Northwood Court, Medina. I don't have any fancy credentials. I'm a resident of Ohio. I'm a child of God. I am not sitting here and playing holy roller. My granddaughter is being raised by two dads. I have a rainbow family. I have 10 grandchildren, five white, two black, and three biracial. While I have been here, I don't have an issue with what we're trying to do here, but I do have an issue with the way it is written. I am a member of St. Francis. I feel like people feel the Catholic, it's the Catholic religion against the LBG. I'm sorry, there is so much more to my religion than I try to live every day. I feel, though, that this ordinance needs to be worked better to allow me to practice my faith without people saying, "Oh, you're Catholic, then you're against the gay community." That's not the case. Please give me the same courtesy you want me to give you. Let me have the freedom to practice my religion. Don't judge me on my religion, as I'm not going to judge you on your sexual being. So that's all I'm saying. I don't think it's ready to be voted on. I don't want to see us in a situation similar to Oberlin College as a taxpayer. I don't want to be paying money for lawsuits as a member of St. Francis Parish. I don't want to have to be paying money to the dioceses for us to seek our right to practice our religion as we see fit. Thank you for the opportunity.
My name is Lance Travies, and I own Lab Earth Management Group at 239 South Court Street with my wife, Leslie. We also own that as a commercial property, and I guess I'm here possibly representing a really invested party, because I'm actually an employer in the city of Medina and a property, a commercial property owner that provides services. And I'm just here to state my support for this ordinance, simply because I think that it's inclusive and it supports the values that I think all of us seek to actually have Medina represent. And from a self-interest standpoint, as an employer, I would echo a couple of the former speakers who stated that I see this as actually a competitive advantage, a positive aspect for Medina to have out there in the world, which it is a competitive environment to basically seek and obtain businesses. As in the past, and we all have a past, if you're a white male over the age of 50, in my business, which is environmental health and safety, I started out probably with more women than you might think, because we maybe had more women go in environmental science and health and safety back in the early 80s. But at that time, it wasn't uncommon for myself to go out to industrial facilities with old-guard, 50-year-old men who really did not appreciate having women actually on-site. And I tell you that because I recently, this year, went to sea on the basis of sex with Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And I think it was only a few decades ago when we really sort of started getting over what really was a tragic time in the United States, where we basically had a very serious sexual discrimination against women in employment, in occupation, in housing, in getting car loans. My mother... My mother, who's 80, talks about the time when she was a full-time registered nurse, had a good job, went to the bank, wanted to get her first car loan, and the banker denied her. He wanted to have my dad, who they were loving, married for more than 50 years, couple, co-sign the loan. She simply walked out of the bank, went to the bank down the street, and got that loan anyway. I think Medina needs to actually be the community that you are already representing. You don't need to delay. I work in the business world. I see it every day. I see opponents to different types of projects, opponents to different types of activities, request or petition or appeal things simply for the basis of if you can delay, 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 maybe you'll actually win in the long run. Because the persons who are actually trying to propose the change, propose the project, will just basically run out of steam. I would hope that the community has enough steam here that that won't happen regardless. But I would say there's been a pretty thoughtful process. There's always a, an opportunity for improvement in anything you do legislatively. That is why you have the ability to modify ordinances after it. I think the question in regards to the legal aspects, certainly that was a question when people were dealing with other type of discriminatory practices in the past. As a father of a person within the LGBTQ community who has a loving wife, and just because of the Supreme Court decision on the, on same-sex marriage, was able to have a lovely wedding that was out in public and was endorsed by the state of Ohio and provided those equal protections, I think that is something that's missing. This is not about your personal home. This is not about your personal behavior. This is not about anything related to that. This is about me as an employer and what I can and cannot do for a public employment scenario. I respect, I know, because I know everybody's an at-will employee, but I think it sends a message to the world and certainly the business community, which the Fortune 500s, more than 91% actually have this already in place. They're looking for communities that represent the diversity and inclusiveness that this would actually have. So to that, I would say, if you are a resident of Medina, the city of Medina, you have nothing to worry about in regards to your personal opinions on this. If you are a personal, if you have an employment situation, I would hope, again, you have nothing to worry about because you're already inclusive and you are not someone who is going to be anti-gay in your employment practices. Because frankly, if you are, I don't think you'll be successful in the long run. Because you're getting, you're excluding a huge class of very high-performing individuals. And then finally, I think that if you are in a public accommodation, if you're providing something to the public, just like it was back in the Jim Crow days, it is not appropriate for you to take and have a specialized class that you're going to specifically not serve. I think the current legislation, as I've read it, provides accommodation for churches and religious entities in regards to their specific locations and their campus activities. I think that's a very welcomed opportunity for the community to be accepting of this legislation without any further delays. And I would hope that the council would take the consideration that I've stated in regards to an actual employer and someone who actually owns a commercial business that provides professional services in the city of Medina and continue and support the resolution.
All my friends said, "Don't do this." I think I talked too long. I'm Bill Toomes, ex-principal at Cloverleaf High School. Spent 38 and a half years in high schools with kids. What brings me here, folks? I started education in '61. That's over 50-some years ago. It's too bad that we still have to deal with prejudices. It's been a story of my life. I've been most of it as an administrator, sitting in offices, talking about kids regardless whether sexual orientation, color, creed, what it may be. It's been going too long, folks. It's too bad we have to pass laws to stop it. Second reason I'm here, I want to publicly thank Mr. Cohen. The other night, I went down, didn't know him from Adam, came out of the crowd when Don shook his hand. Because after the finance meeting, he made what I consider the most appropriate conversation. "It's time for you folks to be leaders in this community and set an example," and this is his exact words, "for the young people coming up through our schools today." And I respected that comment enough as an ex-administrator to go down and thank the man for understanding what is being done for young people. When I saw these folks go out as young people, my family lived for 38 and a half years off of working with them. I owed them a thank you for standing up for what they need to have done in their schools. Does bowling go on? It sure does. And I only want to make one other comment. I don't know how many times I sat in my office, looked a young person in the eye because he was so down or she was so down, and say, "Folks, in my religion, God doesn't make mistakes. You're a good person." And we need to send that message. And that is how I feel religiously. God doesn't make mistakes. He makes people different, but they are not mistakes. And we need to pass this for our kids and our community and show the leadership that I think is sitting there. Thank you.
My name is Jason Myers. I am a pastor of Bethel Baptist Church. We planted at the old Medina Community Theater. Seven years ago, I represent the families who live here in Medina. And I have served my country under Bill Clinton in the United States Army, as well as the fire service and law enforcement, both plainclothes and uniform division. I am now in a great position to be able to mentor people, to help them understand the Lord's will for their life. Also with the background and all of us being involved in this world, we understand that we cannot legislate sin out of this world. And it would be great if these laws would end all discrimination, but they won't. We have laws against speeding, laws against child molestation, laws against all kinds of things, and laws are still being broken. It's because of the world we live in. Sin exists here. The sin of fornication, the sin of adultery, the sin of pride is our problem as a country. And Jesus Christ provides an answer for all sin. And the reality is, there's clergy here this evening, but the gospel of Jesus Christ is the cure for all sin. There are people who go to church here this evening, who may read their Bible, who may listen to their pastor preach, but do not live out the Word of God themselves. The reason that we are in the sin situation, that we are not only in the United States of America, but our community, is because Christians do not obey the Word of God. The reality is, if this law would end all discrimination, what a blessing it would be. But the reality is, all of us will die. All of us will stand in account before the Lord Jesus Christ and give an account for what we've done with His words. Christians who are here tonight, what have you done with the teaching of Jesus Christ? Have you shared the gospel with other people? The reality is, the Scriptures say that all of us will stand before God and give an account. And after that, the judgment. I stand before you this evening, a sinner, just like all of you, but I've placed my dependence upon Jesus Christ, as the Scriptures say. We're talking about laws for our day and time, but salvation is for where we live after The Bible says that Jesus lived a sinless life and that He died upon a cross to save all of mankind. Jesus is that perfect example of love that each of us should imitate. If we would love God with all of our heart, with all of our soul, and with all of our might, there would be little need for any laws. But because man refuses to accept Jesus Christ as their Lord and Savior, we continue to have sin on the rise. That is all.
I'm Reverend Anthony Seba, Pastor St. Francis Xavier, 606 East Washington Street. And this is...
Kevin Burke, Council for the Diocese of Cleveland, 1404 East 9th Street in Cleveland and St. Francis Xavier Church.
All right. I think we all hear our pillows calling. So I would just like to thank the council members for, and the mayor, for taking to consider our concerns with the original legislation. And thank you for your patience and our contributions. And I do think you have a better piece of law than you did three weeks ago, but I wonder if it couldn't be more improved. Kevin will speak.
Thank you. As I mentioned at the committee meeting recently, one of the basic and most beautiful tenets of the Catholic faith is that all people are made in the image and likeness of God. And it's because of that tenet of faith that the Church opposes all unjust discrimination. And it's why Catholics believe that all persons should be treated with basic dignity and respect, and why we believe that all persons have the rights to things like employment and housing and services related to safety and gender and healthcare. And that's why I said at this recent committee meeting that we, as a Catholic Church, do not oppose a law aimed at addressing unjust discrimination. However, when addressing issues related to sexuality and gender identity in the form of legislation such as this, the difference between the person who has inherent dignity and the actions of a person, which have potentially real ethical and social ramifications and about which others may reasonably make moral judgments, is a distinction that is easily missed. And that's why I spoke out at that time regarding the need for meaningful protections for religious liberties, free exercise, freedom of speech, and freedom of conscience. Of course, the challenge, as you know, as a council in enacting a law such as this, is to ensure that it does not, in attempting to protect one class of citizens from being treated as second-class citizens, cause another class to be made second-class citizens for simply believing in the natural and undeniable differences between male and female, and for simply believing in the natural, unique emotional, spiritual, and physical complementarity that male and female share as a result of those differences. I do, like Father, want to thank the council and the city's legal team, and especially the council president, Cohen, for your willingness to dialogue with us, to talk to us about our concerns, to hear us, and to indeed make real, I think substantive, changes to the ordinance. I want to applaud you for that and thank you for that. I do want to express, you know, my continued concerns with regard to some, several points that I've made previously. I do remain concerned that the legislation could be used to require, underpaying a penalty of person, like a small business owner or a healthcare professional, to act in a way that violates their moral principles or conscience. I also remain concerned that the legislation does not address legitimate privacy concerns related to facilities such as bathrooms and locker rooms that are segregated legitimately on the basis of biological differences between the sexes. And I also remain concerned that the legislation could possibly have the unintended, unintended consequence of regulating speech and belief in a less than neutral way regarding the different viewpoints that citizens hold regarding the nature of the human person and of human sexuality. But again, I am grateful for the dialogue that we've had. I'm grateful for the willingness of the council to consider our viewpoints, and again, the changes that have been made to this point. And I understand that you have an unenviable task here. You have the task of trying to balance the different rights of different people in a manner that's fair to everyone. And I would just extend, in closing, an open invitation to you. If you should consider in the future changes, further changes to address the things that I've expressed in terms of my concerns, you know, I'm certainly willing and open to having further dialogue with you. You've certainly shown me anyway that you're willing to listen, and I'm certainly willing to listen to other viewpoints as well. So again, we'll just extend that invitation to any further dialogue if you find it meaningful. Thank you.
If the real issue is bullying in our schools, and I know it happens, I have a school with 500 kids, and it goes on, even Catholic kids bully other Catholic kids for whatever reason. If it really is an issue, I don't think legislation is going to fix it. It might send a message, but kids learn to bully from mom and dad. I'm sorry, it's my experience. If we really want young people to have respect for each other, we need to invite people to a change of heart, to encounter their brother, their sister, their neighbor who's different, and to get to know them. Not judge, not be judged, not be threatened. And it's that kind of interaction, I think, that will bring about the desired effect that people are hoping this legislation will do. And that's to create a community where people are really welcomed and reverenced and respected. I was in the seminary, they would make laws to keep us under control, and it didn't ever work, you know? How long the beard could be, how long the hair could be, you know, what time. You got to win over human hearts. And if we really want to work on this together, let's everybody get together and figure out how to involve coaches and different community leaders who work with our young people to bring in training programs, anti-bullying experiences. Because we don't need to lose young people to suicide. We don't need to lose young people to drugs or alcohol to escape. If we really love our young people, let's do something productive and effective for their good. Thank you.
My name is Jack Petrella. I'm just a guy that lives in Medina, 234 West North Street, apartment 103C. I've been a resident of Medina for 29 years. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I've been part of politics on the left, I would say, ever since I joined the anti-war movement in 1969. Okay? I'm here in support of this legislation. I think it's something we need. You've heard many clerics, both for and opposed. Okay? This is a controversy that isn't going away. You've heard calls for people to change their hearts. Most of us would hope that that would happen, that we would eliminate hate. But I'm a pragmatist and a realist. I know that that's not going to happen. Who can forget Charlottesville? However, you know, although we still have racism in this country, and probably will have continued to have it, we passed civil rights legislation in the mid-'60s. President Johnson passed it, despite a lot of opposition in the South. And although people's hearts didn't necessarily change, as the laws did, things changed. And if this legislation is passed, things will change here. Certain people who are homophobic or have their own religious issues will continue to have them. They're welcome to them. That's not a problem. This is America. You're allowed your own opinion. But if we make something a law that makes it impossible to discriminate because you hold these beliefs and opinions, that's as good as it gets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say that I know we're running out of time. Miles has been texting us. We have, what, five minutes left, and then the tape's gone. There's a three-hour tape, and it's gone. So if anybody has new stuff to say, I mean, I'd love to go all night, but I don't know if we want to be here all night. I just, you know, I want to give every opportunity to speak, but if there's something new that wants to be added, and you really want to speak, do it. But I don't know if we have to stop and change the tape. All right, he's going to change the tape because we're out of time on the tape. I don't think that's ever happened.
No, it's never happened.
Miles says we're back on tape. So again, if you really want to say something, say it. But otherwise, I think we want to move on with the meeting. So I leave it up to whomever would like to say anything else. Otherwise, we'd like to move on. It's up to you. Last file, okay.
All right, real quick, I'm just, I will be brief here. My name is Amy Demloy. I live at 763 Victoria Circle. I've been there 20 years. I am the other mom who brought this to the special legislation committee, and I've been an advocate for this ordinance. I want to thank council. I want to thank the mayor and the law director for working through this process. I want to address that this is not special rights. One of my favorite memes is that equal rights for others does not mean less rights for you. It's not pie. And if you haven't seen that, it really hits home. This law is important for youth. It is important for business because it attracts employees to our employers. It is important for promoting diversity and inclusion. I also want to thank Equality Ohio for providing guidance during this process, as they have the expert knowledge in LGBT matters. Their support and leadership has been invaluable. I have a great deal of respect for their continued advocacy in this area and appreciate their concern over the revised language that was suggested by the diocese. I too prefer that version, but I encourage you, as a Medina City resident, as a business owner, and as a mom, to adopt tonight this ordinance, including the revision, so that Medina is an inclusive and welcoming community for all.
Thank you. All right. Thanks for the comment. I guess what we'll do now is I'm going to read ordinance 111 in, and then we'll have our discussion, so everybody can have their piece on council. And then we'll move forward with the vote on that to see how it would play out. So ordinance 111-19 is an ordinance demanding section 54108 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio to prohibit intimidation on the basis of sex, gender, identity, or expression, or sexual orientation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. So I guess if you want to talk on this ordinance or the next ordinance, if any council member wants to say anything, I guess I'd do it now. Any discussion? A little clerk, please call the roll.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
No.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 111-19 passes 681A.
Ordinance 112-19, an ordinance adopting a new chapter 717 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio to prohibit discriminatory conduct on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity or expression.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Rose.
I do have a few comments here about this. First of all, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. It's been some very good input, some new information, some not-so-new information. I'd like to thank the mayor, the law director, president of council for their hard work on this. Thanks to the Cleveland Diocese for their hard work on this. I know a lot of people, there was a lot of give and take on this, and I thank you all for that. First of all, just let me state this plain and simply, so there's no ambiguity. I don't believe that any beating heart should suffer any of the discrimination. Okay? As the oldest grandchild of immigrant Italians, growing up in a black and Italian ghetto, I get it. Okay? So the person who made an assumption, you know what happens when you make an assumption. You make an out-of, okay? All right? We'll just leave it there. All right. I'm a firm believer in educate, don't legislate. We've heard that before here a couple of times in a couple of flavors. Okay? I spent the last 42 years in business, the last 18 of it in technology, and there was this thing where you always wanted to be on the leading edge of something, but you never wanted to be on the bleeding edge of something. And I think right here is where we are. We're on the bleeding edge. We have some things that we should consider first. I am one of the proponents, let's take a step back, let's look at it, because to put something in just for the sake of putting it in, we may be setting ourselves up for some problems down the road. For those of you who are afraid of losing your jobs out there in the workforce, I said it at this special legislation committee, I'm going to say it here now, make yourself the most valuable employee your employer has. And you don't have to worry about getting laid off. And that goes for everybody here. That's not just, okay, you know.
Hey, civil.
Okay? I'm a gray-haired white guy. All right? I worked in a major corporation that was multinational. I had a U.S. salary. They could hire three Indian guys to replace me. So, and I like to eat. So I made, I worked at it, you can too. That's not just one person. That's everybody. Does this legislation solve a problem? I really don't think so. I think it'll only relieve a symptom. To solve any problem, the root of the problem must be corrected before any lasting resolution can be seen. This past weekend, I had the privilege to participate in my nephew's wedding. In one of the readings, I read this phrase, "For the protection and sanctity of human life from conception to a natural death, may all people, all people, be treated with the dignity they deserve as God's children." I believe this is to be the solution to the root of the problem. Teach people to treat others with the dignity they deserve. Educate, don't legislate. All right? Everybody, if we can get together, stop this old little herkimer over here and little ischka bibble over there, did this, that, and the other thing. If we get people, as suggested here before, work together on the problems, work together to come to the resolution, we won't need any of these laws. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank everybody for their comments tonight. I know there's some people that have felt that they've not been involved in this process, even though it's been going on for most a year. I don't know much more we could have done with it being on the local television networks and the local and Akron and Cleveland newspaper print sections. I don't know how you've not been able to, and obviously, on the social media, the internet, Facebook and so forth, it has been involved. But I understand that some people wanted to move slower. I just happen to disagree. I think we're at a moment that we need to move forward with this. I'm the first one to have to get up and go pee because I'm old. So I'm old, and I've seen so much discrimination in my life, not so much in Medina, I'm talking nationally. I was 10 years old when John F. Kennedy got assassinated. And I was out, that night, I was out, my father took me out to dinner, and we went to the only restaurant in Akron that was open. And we sat down, and at the bar by our table, there was five guys, men, I don't know how old they were, because I was only 10, but they looked old. Five, and one of them said, "I wish they would have shot that son of a, three years ago, and we wouldn't have to been putting up with the Catholic religion, and sticking up for blacks, and sticking up for poor people." And I looked at my dad and said, "Dad, why would they say something like that?" And he said, "You know, don't worry about it, just eat." Well, that stuck with me. I mean, there was, and there was so, I mean, yes, President Johnson did pass the civil rights legislation, and whoever said it, it did make a difference. Is it going to stop people from hating? Absolutely not. But the law made a difference. And through my lifetime, I was brought up by my, one of my most favorite relatives, my great aunt, who said, "If you want to be able to put your head on your pillow at night and sleep good every night, is do something kind for somebody," excuse me, "every day, and treat everybody," the golden rule, "the way that you want to be treated. And you're going to have a good life. You're going to have people that's going to be against you. That's okay. It's going to be their problem, not yours." So, yes, I recognize, I recognize that the LGBTQ population in the city of Medina has seen things and heard things that I wasn't aware of, because I'm not in your class right now. But I know that you've suffered. And this legislation may not stop haters and bullying, but there is some teeth to it. There is some teeth to it. And I'm proud to be one of them that is going to support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot has been said tonight, and I don't want to repeat. There was, actually, I had a list of things on here I wanted to say, and I kept crossing them out as other people saying them. So I will say this. This is what democracy looks like. I'm a teacher, and I would love to have these kind of discussions in the classroom, but they are difficult, and they don't happen very much in our society. Think about the last time that us as a community got together and actually talked about something like this. And we're all here with each other. That's the start. Will legislation cure everything? No, not at all. But it's the start. And we've gotten lots of emails, especially in the last 24 hours, about this. And I've been asked the question in these emails and these phone calls on, people have said, "It'll just be the start." I've been the one that's been saying that, right? And they're like, "What is next? The dominance of the gays, right? They're going to take us over? That's their next step." But the next step is that we can have these discussions and that people feel comfortable coming out as gay. Nobody's mind was changed here tonight. I doubt it. You came in here with one side or the other, you heard these stories, and you didn't change your mind. But it's the start of the discussion. My own personal journey started with my best friend coming out to me as gay, a long time after he should have. And that's kind of embarrassing for me, because he didn't know that he can come out to me. And in high school, I didn't think I knew anyone that was gay. Honestly, I went to Buckeye, which you know is right down the road, but honestly, it's a mile, you know, hundreds of miles away from what Medina High School is. It's very small, we have Bring Your Tractor to School Day, right? And I may have used my own religion as an ignorance to what else was going on. And I'm not gay, and I can't possibly know what it's like to be gay. But I can, through him and through the many other friends that I later learned were also gay, my attitude has changed, and that took years, years. So no, no one's opinion's going to change today. The law's going to go into act, hopefully, and, you know, no one's going to walk out of here and say, "They convinced me with that law." But I hope, I sincerely hope, that we pass this. We are saying, as a community, that you are welcome here, and though the person working next to you in that cubicle or that seat at that school is different than you, that you can say who you are and what you believe in, whether that is your Christian belief or not, whether you are gay, straight, whatever, but you can talk about that. And that's the next step, is that we create a better community. Our motto here in Medina is preserving the past and forging the future, and I believe that passing this will forge that future.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're here to make laws. So we are led by our law director. He said two things tonight. He said there was a real uncertainty in the law, and that this is a new area of law. That's why it is so contentious. There are many civil rights here colliding with each other at this point in time in history. And that's why 31 states don't have a law pertaining to this. Everybody knows what October 7th and October 8th coming up is, right? Today, the Supreme Court hears three cases on these. They're going to establish federal law, federal antidiscrimination law, which will set the standard for every state, every city in the country. We've worked on this for longer than it's going to be until the Supreme Court comes out with their decision. Everyone agrees that Medina is a great place to live, great place to work, great place to visit. Someone said, "Are we solving a problem or creating a problem by trying to solve it?" I don't know. That's not a good example. I'm just saying, the Supreme Court of the United States of America is going to be deciding this in 13 weeks. I would say, wait for them. Thank you.
Mr. Shields?
We've heard so many great speakers tonight on both sides of the issues, and I appreciate everybody's view. I guess I want to end with something positive, if at all possible, tonight. And that's a reflection of, we do a, mayor and I do a lesson with every third grader, we talk about government and what it's all about here in City Hall. And one of the things I'm always most proud about this council in 18 years is, we don't always agree. We do the best we can to come up with legislation that at least four of us agree with, so it becomes legislation here in Medina. We know, at the end of the day, we all love Medina, we care about Medina. But after we walk out of here tonight, we have always respected one another. We have listened to each other. We might not agree with the administration, we might not agree with each other, but we put it aside after we walk out, and we say, "We're going to do what's best for Medina." And I guess, you know, we represent the 26,000 people who live here in the city. It's our job to come up with the best legislation possible. You elect us to represent us. Tonight, I'm going to ask all 26,000 and everybody else here to leave here and continue to respect each other, try to learn from one another, try to listen to each other's side, because that's what it's all about. That's what makes Medina so special. And I just hope everybody can still respect one another and understand each other's point of view, and know that we all tried to do something good for the betterment of Medina tonight. So thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Hefinger pointed out that this is what democracy looks like. Let me give you another example of what democracy looks like and how it works best. I was the culprit, who unfortunately, in the heat of a discussion with the diocese attorney, with Kevin Burke, said something I regretted and wish I hadn't said. And the way we work best is, I called Father Tony, and we sat down for an hour and had a good discussion. And while I know everybody's not in agreement with the formula or the formation of the ordinance now, you know, after the involvement of the diocese, in a real sense, it was out of that participation of the diocese that we were able to make some, we made some changes in the ordinance that, in all likelihood, enabled the legislation to be passed. And it is that kind of dialogue with all the people that have come here. And let me correct, I think, what is a relatively false narrative. Over a period of nine months, this piece of legislation has gestated about the same amount of time it takes to have a baby. And this piece of legislation was brought to us, we considered it, we had two special legislation committee meetings, and in the second special legislation committee meeting, it was voted out of committee with three votes. And it was a public meeting, as was the previous special legislation meeting, and it was well-advertised. And I do believe that those meetings were multiple times on the front pages of newspapers and Cleveland.com. It is unfortunate if anybody was not aware of those meetings, because they were open to the public, and I specifically tried to schedule them so that they would not run into the time when people were working, because if you can't come and participate, then if you can't come to a meeting, you can't be heard, and we can't hear your views. And that's important to me, and I know it's important to the rest of the members of City Council. We had a good discussion at the finance committee meeting, and I thoroughly enjoyed the opportunity to visit with Father Tony and the phone call that I had with Kevin Burke following that, and their commitment to try to work this out. And that's what I mean by the best. and their commitment to try to work this out. And that's what I mean by the best, the way we work best, and unfortunately, it doesn't happen very often, and that is to understand that we have to listen to each other and work to achieve a goal. And I believe tonight, we're going to achieve that goal. And to me, and I've been involved in education, in government, community organizing in Medina for maybe 50 years. I know a lot of you. I've done a couple of things since I've been here, but this, to me, is the most important. This is something that directly affects the rights of individuals that live in my community. I don't think that they are special rights. As I said yesterday, I am a white, straight male. I have all these rights. For me to work so that everyone else can have them doesn't make you special. It doesn't make you anything except equal to me. And I never wake up wondering if I will or will not have a job, or could I get a house. None of those things come into play with me. I'm comfortable in who I am. And I want everybody to have that opportunity to be comfortable in who they are. I understand what Father Tony was saying about responsibility of parenting, and it is true. Unfortunately, and fortunately, children do learn from their parents, for better or for worse. However, I do think, as President Coyne has said, this sends a strong signal. This sends a message. This says, "We believe in this. We believe in equality, and we believe that we represent the better interests of everyone, not just some people, but everyone." I don't think you can do better than that. In the hundreds of pieces of legislation I voted on, or the hundreds and hundreds of pieces of legislation I had been involved in previously, I always simply looked at what I felt and what I understood to be the right thing to do. And I believe this is the right thing, and this is the just thing, and this is clearly long overdue to pass this legislation. We recently celebrated Independence Day. Independence Day, Independence Day is somehow predicated on a document. And in that document, I think there's a phrase that says, in that document, in the Declaration of Independence, that we believe all people are created equal. And so, to fly the flag, to march in the parade, to talk about our patriotism can't be done unless we really believe in that sentence that we are all created equal. To me, that is a reality. That's the great leveler. We are all created equal. And this legislation then provides that protection. We all walk under the same umbrella. For jobs, for public access, for who you think you are, this will provide that level of protection. I am proud of this legislation. I think it was overdue. I am the culprit that led it through special legislation. A lot of people deserve credit for putting this together, way more than I, my participation. And I think this is a good thing for our community, and I will be happy to vote in favor of it.[1433.35][1433.35](APPLAUSE)
Well, I'd just like to thank everybody and all the council members for their opinions and working together with the administration and Mr. Huber and the outside council and going over this for many, many months and discussions. I don't know if people really believe that, and I was kind of questioning that because my wife showed up tonight. I was thinking she was wondering if I really did work in the evenings, because I'm never home. But I'm glad that she can come and support me in this process and know that I actually do some things at council here. So, that's a good thing. But again, I like to thank everybody's efforts. I think that this has been a process, it's always a learning process. As a lawyer, we learn early on, it's called the practice of law, and that's just what it is. We're really just practicing, and hopefully someday we'll get good at it. But we learn through the ordinances, we learn through the issues we run into from day to day, and we learn from the people we run into from day to day. And, you know, growing up in Medina and attending Buckeye, I was going to do a tractor day. That was the best day. We, you know, you learn things. You grow up in a rural community, you know, you start meeting people and you go through life. And I attended the University of Tennessee, went to a different part of the country, and I learned more. And I think when you go through those processes and you learn, and hopefully I learned from my grandfather, who was a mayor for a long time and was the first seatbelt law and the first cellphone law in Ohio, you learn, you take chances. You learn from what helps the community, what's going to further the interest of everybody. Now, it may not make everybody happy. It may not further everybody's goals, but what I've learned early on is, you know, being raised Catholic and going to church and being raised in a farm is, you know, we're all here together. We all work together, and we're all under one God. So, what does that mean? It means that we all should be treated the same. We, you know, there really should be no discrimination out there, because what is discrimination but just holding people back? And I think the country that we live in, we like to bring people forward. We like to achieve our personal goals in life and our personal achievements that we arrive at our self, I guess, I don't know what you want to call it, your self-worth, so to speak. And I think if we ever have a chance to try to further the community forward and further this country forward and make us continue to be the best country in the world, there's things that we have to take, and there's things we learn through this process that you have to ask yourself, "What's the right thing to do?" And my evaluation of this process was, well, I don't think discrimination is anything that's ever appropriate in this country because we are not founded on any type of discrimination. I mean, geez, that's why we left England, wasn't it? Because we wanted religious freedom to begin with, and we wanted to do our own practicing. So, we left a country to be on our own. With that said, it boils down to me to a very simple thing. I think Medina is a place of inclusion rather than a place of exclusion. And I think that's kind of the basis of what we want to, we want to let the people of this, you know, Ohio and the country know that, hey, we welcome everybody, and that's who we are, and that's who we want to be. So, with that, I think I'm going to go ask for a roll call and a vote. So, a clerk, please call a roll on adoption of ordinance 112-19. Yes, I did. Mm-hmm. Long time ago.
Okay. Simpson?
Simpson.
It's late.
Yes.
Starcher?
No.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
No.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 112-19 passes five yeas.[1661.51][1661.51](APPLAUSE)
Okay. All right, the meeting's not over. Wait, 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 wait. We have one more ordinance. You're staying to the end. You're staying to the end.[1696.23][1696.23](LAUGHTER) We have ordinance 113-19, which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids to award a contract to a successful bidder for the sale and removal of city-owned house located at 347 North Huntington Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance. Mayor Hamwell.
The reason for the emergency clause is we'd like to get this document bid and accomplished while the council is on break. This permits us to do that. The other thing is, we'd like it's subject to the law director's approval, because there's still some discussions with the school on the restoration of the lot.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comments as this ordinance will be subject to the law director's final approval, if approved?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
Because this ultimately might affect my employer, I'm going to need to abstain on this to avoid any appearance of a conflict.
Thank you. Any further discussion? A clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Abstain.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Motion passes six yeas, one abstention.
Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Kathy, it was abstain.
Oh, okay.
He's tired.
I'm all tired. Ordinance 113-19 passes six yeas, one abstention.
I assume there's no council comments? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned.[1796.23][1796.23](LAUGHTER)